Welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting for September 10th, 2012. First item here is our Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Selectmen's Meeting this evening, we opened in public at quarter of six and immediately went into a non-public session under RSA 91A3 Roman II Princesses B, which is dealt with hiring. We discussed that issue and came out of non-public and now it is 6 o'clock and we're open for public portion of this session. Next item is our review of the minutes from the 27th of August. Item two in your packets.
Move to accept.
Second. Any discussion about corrections necessary? Those in favor of the motion to accept these minutes indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
That was Janice.
I have one announcement. There will be a Red -- American Red Cross flood drive is conducted at Goffstown Fire Station and it's eight days from now, Tuesday, September 18th. It'll be in the afternoon from 1:00 to 6:00, sponsored by the Goffstown Fire Department and American Red Cross. Then Scott, you have an announcement for tomorrow's, our primary, and an announcement dealing with voter activities.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The town was provided with a notification from the state of New Hampshire, the Secretary of State's office, with respect to the new voter ID law. And basically, I'm going to read it kind of verbatim so that there is no confusion. During the 2012 legislative session, the legislature passed House Bill 1354, also known as the voter ID law. The new law will be a phase in -- will phase in a photo identification requirement over a period of time. So that's very important. It's not just, it's going to be done in a phased-in approach. So one of the questions is what type of photo ID will I need in order to vote? So here are the forms of ID that you will need to vote. And this is for all elections before September 1st, 2013.
Next.
All right? All right? So you can have a driver's license issued by any state, even if it's expired. An ID card issued by the New Hampshire Department of Motor Vehicles. You can have a United States Armed Services ID card, a U.S. passport, even if it's expired. A valid photo ID card issued by either the federal government or a state, county, or municipal government. A valid student ID card. Other photo ID deemed legitimate by the supervisors of the checklist, the moderator, or the clerk. And lastly, verification of identity by a supervisor of the checklist, the moderator, or the clerk. So the question is, is what happens if I do not have one of these approved IDs that I just mentioned? So before November 1st of this year, any voter who does not present an approved photo ID will be informed of the new law and permitted to vote. So that'll, that'll be for tomorrow. In the presidential election this coming November, it will be different. In that particular case, any voter who does not present an approved photo ID will be permitted to vote after executing a quote "challenged voter affidavit." A voter who does not have an approved photo ID may obtain a free photo ID for voting purposes only by presenting a voucher from their town or city clerk or the Secretary of State to any New Hampshire DMV office that issues identification. Is there, here's a question. Is there any post-election action required by me after I vote without an approved photo ID? After November 1st of this year, if you filled out a challenged voter affidavit in order to vote on Election Day, you will receive a verification letter from the State Secretary of State's office requesting confirmation that you voted in the election. If you do not respond in writing to the Secretary of State within 90 days of the date it is mailed, the Attorney General will conduct an investigation to determine whether fraudulent voting occurred. So they're just trying to verify. And lastly, where can I get more information? Contact our clerk here, which is Kathy Ball, or you can go on to the Secretary of State's office, their website, and that's sos.nuhampshire.gov. Again, that's sos.nuhampshire.gov, or you can call them at 603-271-3242.
Just to be clear, Scott, that's .nh, right?
They didn't put that.
It's not spelled out. New Hampshire's not spelled.
Right, it's, yes, right. It's .nh, yes. Thank you for clarifying.
Any other board members have announcements?
The polls are open 7 to 7, all right, tomorrow?
Yeah, the polls are open at Goffstown High School and Barlett Elementary School, starting at 7:00 a.m., and they will conclude at 7:00 p.m. The moderator, it's always the moderator's discretion as to who is in line at 7:00 p.m., and that's a judgment call of the moderator. So, but please arrive before that time, so it's not an issue.
I'd like to wait till 10 past 6 for public comment, because that's when the agenda calls for it. Is there any other item that's, will take five minutes here?
You have a motion from non-public, if you'd like to take that up.
Yes, let's go ahead and do that now. Based on our discussion at our non-public, is there a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the police chief with respect to offering a conditional offer of employment to a special officer.
I'll second that. Discussion? Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And if I could just clarify, lots of times when we do these things, this is not an additional office, these are special officers who fill in for shifts, things of that nature. It's not, not, you know, an additional full-time officer.
They're part-time.
They're part-time, right?
That's correct, Chief. Thank you. Let's open for public comment. Anyone in the audience like to address this board for three minutes on subjects that may not be on the agenda? Yes, sir, please come up to the table or identify yourself.
I'm Norm Duvall at 51 Bay Street. You guys kind of took my thunder away a little bit when you told me you were taking the trussel down, I gotta tell you that. I just, I came to voice my displeasure over the communications of what went on with the paving on Mass Road, particularly last week, when I come home and I see a sign that we're going to be paving at night from whatever, you know, 8:00 p.m. until 5:00 in the morning, and then you get up to go find your road is blocked off because they decided to pave during the day. All right? Then you leave to go bring your child to school, or go get some milk, and come back and do whatever you want, to find out that both Danus Park and Lynchville Park roads are both blocked off. There is no other way to get to my house, okay? I think that's wrong. I actually called the police department, told them both roads are blocked off, didn't think that was acceptable. They agreed with me, said they were going to contact the highway department. I don't know what we paid for all the communication signs that went on there for this period of time, but, you know, I don't think paving's that big of a deal. I see it happen all the time. I don't know what went wrong. I don't know if we need more project management. I don't know if the contractor failed. I don't know what went wrong. But when I come home and I see a sign saying that they're paving at night and I can't get out of my road in the morning, I'm not happy with that. And when I do get out and I try to come back home and I can't, I'm not happy with that. Okay? I don't know where the failure was, but there certainly was a failure. Okay? I understand we had rain. I do project management all the time. I understand construction. I understand snow, floods, everything. It happens. But that was executed very poorly and I needed to come over here and say that.
Thank you for your comment. And the road is now fully paved?
No, it is not.
Except for some, there's some driveway.
They're actually paving my road as I drove by here.
Right, road connections are the, off of the main drive and driveway connections, yes.
Yeah, just, just get it done. Get it done. All right, it's not that big of a deal. Finish the project, make everybody happy.
We're all, Norm, we're all going to be very glad when that project's done, and thank you for bringing the miscommunication to our attention.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Sullivan.
Good evening again. Tonight I have three items. The first is, I have the opportunity to accept a donated canine. This past month, we had to put one of our dogs down because of kidney failure, so I'm down a canine. The donation, it's a donation, I'm purchasing the dog for a dollar. The dog's worth $4,900. It's donated by one of my officers to become a working dog. It's passed the, I guess, the entrance exam to become a police canine, if there is such a thing, or that's what they call it. And it's been screened by the head trainer for New Hampshire State Police. It has a background in tracking, obedience, and apprehension work. It seems it'll be a good fit at this point.
Officer Weeks is already a dog healer?
Until he just put his dog down.
Yes.
But he is, it's a hobby of his to train dogs, yes.
Yes. I'm curious, how did he, Officer Weeks come by the dog? Did he adopt it, breed it?
He obtained, again, he's.
I'm just curious.
He trains dogs as, on the side, on his own.
Oh, he does?
So, this is a dog that he's had initial training with already, and he purchased it initially.
That's terrific. Now, apparently mature enough to, it has passed the initial.
Correct.
Review at the state level.
He obtained it at five months old and is currently just two years old, so he's been working with it since then.
And so we'll send a lot of appreciation and gratitude.
Depends on the outcome of this motion, I think.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to, in light of the fact that this is under the $5,000 threshold, not requiring a public hearing, I will make a motion that we gratefully accept the donation of the dog from Officer Weeks and send a thank you letter to him.
Second. Those in favor of the motion, say, indicate saying aye.
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 When is this wearing in?
Five zero, Catherine.
Yes. And Chief, my understanding is, once the dog has seen its tour duty, so to speak, it's returned to Chris.
It's returned back to him for the same dollar.
Just so everyone knows.
Chief, I understand there are a number of dogs in the town that haven't completed registration.
Funny you should ask. They have actually completed registration. We received the, what we call a civil forfeiture, forfeiture list from the town clerk several months ago. On that list was 238 dogs. We've gone through the list. Each of the dogs have been addressed. Either, they've either died, moved away, given away, they either pay their fines, are summoned to court, or they have the wrong tag number. So, we've gone through the list, it's been fully completed.
And 238 were a considerable number, and it's, I know from your point of view, it's a task you probably wouldn't wish your officers to be involved with.
That is correct.
Thank you. Thank you for getting that assignment fully accomplished.
Well, it was the officers, and they, they put their heart and soul into it, and they've done it very timely manner.
There's no action you're requesting on that regard?
No, that's, that's information on.
That has been completed?
Yes.
Thank you for taking care of it. Thank you for the officers who knocked on many doors.
Oh, yes. And the final item is, this past July, when we were in Scottsdale for our Kalia reassessment, Michelle Preventure tested to become an assessor for Kalia, which would require travel throughout the country, going to on-sites and evaluating different departments. The Goffstown Police Department has a long history of being involved with Kalia. Chief Monier was a commissioner with Kalia. Chief French was a head assessor with Kalia. Sergeant LaBelle was an assessor with Kalia. And now we have the opportunity to have Michelle Preventure become an assessor with Kalia. The cost to the town on this one would be about $1,000 to $1,500 to send her down to Virginia for two days and fly her back and have the training done there. After that, she would be taking her vacation times to do this on sites. She would be paid for it. Again, it's her vacation time. And then they also send out, now they send packages of files to her, which she has to do at home. So that also would be done on her time. At this point, Chief French in the past has brought back great ideas from on-sites. One that comes to mind is propertyroom.com, where we no longer have to schedule and go through the whole auction thing that we now can use propertyroom.com. They come, pick the stuff up, and put it on their website to auction. It's a great cost savings. That's just one thing that comes to mind, so. My way I said we'd be allowed to move forward in 2013. When should be able to take that training?
Any comments from the board members? Scott?
In terms of the ability to budget for this, that it's, you have funds within your budget to.
It would be for next year.
Next year's budget.
We've already spoken to Kalia, and they have no training for assessor training scheduled until 2013.
Okay. And one of the benefits is that by Michelle working on assessing other police departments, she picks up tricks of the trade?
Absolutely.
Or better ways of doing the business?
And a better.
And brings that back to your attention.
And a better handle also on the standards and how the commission is looking to have them applied, and the way it's actually being applied.
When, when your department passed that inspection, I think you commented on the fact that she had organized all your files, so she knows from A to Z the full scope of what's required.
Yes, she does, and I think that was reflected in her selection. It's very rare to have a non-law enforcement personnel selected, and being a communication supervisor, it's a great honor.
Compliment on your staff. Another comment, Scott?
Yeah, at a later date, I would like for the chair to consider the possibility of going into a non-public session to discuss the issue of whether or not the employee should take vacation time versus this being time granted by, by the town. I think that is an issue, but it's an issue for a non-public session as it's personnel-related.
Thank you for the suggestion. Well, your comments will feed into our budget deliberation, and, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay. Next item here is, we're beginning now, the 2013 budget overview. Welcome to the budget season. Sue, you get to start off and.
I don't see any members of the budget committee here yet.
Didn't want to wait.
They were invited.
As good we, they were invited, and I know of a couple who are, who told me they'd be attending, so let's delay that till 6:30.
Okay.
And hopefully they'll be here then.
Would you like me to start my budget, my regular report? See how far we can get?
Yes, because that's the next item.
Okay. Your weekly meeting schedules in your packet, basically it's tomorrow, the elections, and then there's a planning board meeting on Thursday. Consensus folder tonight includes manifests for the September 5th accounts payable, $2,380,740.14, and September 5th payroll withholding, manifest of $150,522.93. A September 10th accounts payable of $309,771.74, and a September 10th payroll withholding of $145,118.27. Also, in the consensus folder is a thank you letter to RCI Computer Systems, an extension of the cable TV franchise agreement, and an event permit for Uncounic Mountainiahs of Goffstown for their snowmobile show and swap meet on October 20th.
Motion to accept the consensus folder.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five zero, Catherine?
Yes. Thank you. Your correspondence tonight is, you have a letter from Richard Meany regarding plowing the Villa Agostina school. I think he also submitted that to the newspaper. Second one is a letter from Goffstown Main Street Program, looking for a captain from the Board of Selectmen for the regatta.
Thank you for the lead-in. That's a, an honor I did last fall. Would there be any board members wishing to be a captain of a pumpkin?
Not all at once now.
You're going to make me, make a hard decision here.
When is it?
Let's see.
October 14th.
You could, you could have somebody from.
October 14th is a regatta.
I'll, there's no immediate discussion, I'll take that under advisement. When does Main Street wish a decision?
As soon as you have one. They don't have any deadline here. But we will have a captain.
Oh, we will have a captain.
Okay, okay. I can let her know that. To be determined. Everyone wants to see if it's going to be snowing, right?
Might have to draw, might have to draw short straws.
I don't pass the, the weight limit, so I can't do it.
You also have an email from Southern Hampshire Planning Commission regarding placement of the Granite State listening boxes at Town Hall and various other municipal locations. Samples of the posting and the survey are enclosed in your packet.
Could you please explain what they are, because when people hear what it is, they hear that terminology, they think that it's eavesdropping.
Oh, no, it's about the future of the, how you see the future for the Granite State and about your community.
But it's, it's the thing that it has, it has forms for you to fill in, it's got nothing to do with.
Let me try to summarize for Selectmen of Anna.
The survey. Not for me, for the viewing public, so they know what it is.
This is a postcard-type survey endorsed by the Southern Regional Planning Commission to solicit ideas about future growth in the region.
Yes.
And these comment forms, they're, they're coined as listening boxes, because that's the device that they're handing them out, but the commission, Southern Planning, they want to listen to the citizens and by reading their comments.
Correct.
It's not 1984.
You had a motion, or?
Yeah, to allow it in.
Yes, because we don't normally place comment cards and other giveaways or cards to be reviewed on our various tables in the Town Hall or other departments. So I'd like some discussion if this is something the board would like to have done.
Well, for the sake of time, I don't object to it. I read through, you know, the material in our packet, and I don't think the information is, I don't think there's anything controversial in there, so. I don't, I don't have any objections to it.
The, the item I'm concerned about, Sue, is, indicates that these are card-size response forms, and in our read-ahead packet, they're essentially full-size pieces of paper. And only a few of them make reference to the Southern Regional Planning Commission. And when I first read this, I got the idea this is a, for lack of better words, it's a, an action group looking for feedback, and then they would take that feedback and, whatever they felt would be appropriate, give it to the Southern Region. But then after, you know, I finally read the whole packet I saw in the fine print, that it's an activity sponsored by the Southern Regional Planning Commission. So, it's, that's a suggestion, if this board would like to do this, I would like that type of a comment to go back. These forms need to be more positive as to who's sponsoring the comments or soliciting Any other board members with concerns about this comment card? I would like to entertain a motion.
I just have one, one comment on one of the ones in the beginning, when it asked you to fill out the, the, whether or not, whether you work, you vacation, in the area. I didn't know if that really gave the perspective of the person who was filling it out, because just, just the way you could interpret that, that's all. It's just a comment.
Thank you.
I don't have it in front of me.
It says, I, you can check a box, live, work, visit, or.
Yeah, I live, I live, work, visit, or am a seasonal resident in this area. That's all.
And apparently they would like to categorize groups of people who are making comments, they, you know, a large group of people work in the region, well, live, or reasonable. But that's, like many check-off-the-box forms, if you're uncomfortable with checking off the box, you don't check it out.
No, I understand.
You just make a comment.
Somebody who says they visit, it could be a one-time visit, it could be somebody who visits on a regular basis, and, just my comment.
My other concern, this is too large. We don't have a lot of desk space or counter space for comment cards. Is this?
I'm assuming they're going to be cardized.
Any agreement? I'd just like to have an agreement, do we like to move forward and allow this to be
Silence is.
The silence rules? Okay, well, this board won't support it. Could you pass that back to the Southern Regional?
The board does not support this?
Well, I don't hear anybody in favoring that these be displayed in the Town Hall or other departments.
I was going to say that I will support the information so long as it's properly identified, placed in an area that's visually accessible to people, and if we get comments, fine. If we don't get comments, fine. I mean, I'm not going to force anybody to sign them. I'm in favor of bringing them, bringing them in.
So we'd make them available at one or more locations in town?
Yeah, there will be a moving box, so it might spend a couple weeks here, and it might go to another department.
School or. And how are they collected, by the organization?
That's up to Southern Hampshire Planning Commission.
Yeah, I think we should, I don't see any harm that could come from that.
Okay.
So, Mark, your comments were a motion?
Yes, sir.
And then, do I have a second?
Yes.
And those in favor of putting, using these comment cards in our town departments, indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? They're yours.
Is there a fourth vote? Do I have a fourth, fourth choice?
What would you like as a fourth? You don't.
I don't know.
Okay.
Was that unanimous?
That's the way I took it.
Okay, I'm sorry. Five zero then.
That's why I was asking if there was a fourth vote that I wasn't aware of, some other way I could vote besides yes, no, or abstain. What was the fourth selection?
That was the fourth.
That was my question.
We're going to have to give you a button to press, I think.
Yeah, let's go.
Like the staples?
Get the red button. Easy button.
Maybe my left ear isn't working well.
The final correspondence I had was today, and it was an email from the residents of Lambs and Ave, requesting another meeting with the board, because they felt that what they had requested was the return of plowing, trash, and recycling pickup on their. they had requested was the return of plowing, trash, and recycling pickup on their road. And when I told them that my direction was to get a short-term agreement to adjust plowing only and that trash and recycling would be a vote at town meeting for it to become a public road, they said that's not what they requested. They requested it all. So they would like to come in and have that discussion with the board.
I'm open for a short discussion as to whether that has, do we need any scoping of the whole situation prior to the residents being here?
Yeah, that's what I would like, is that, to save everybody time, if there's a list or there's a scope as to what they want, then that would help us, I think, expedite at our, at our meeting rather than spending twenty minutes or half an hour going over things, like what specifically, because I, when I, when we left it, I thought that we kinda had a pretty good understanding of what was going on.
Sue, do I, do I hear a read into this? Their concern is plowing only versus plowing plus trash collection?
They would like all, they would like the return of all services that have existed historically, listed in a formal agreement.
Because we had talked about if it would, the agreement was gonna be plowing only.
Right.
If it would become a town right away, then it would be open to all.
Right.
Services.
Now, town, for it to become a town right away, that's a, would be an article and a warrant. And prior to us placing that article and the warrant, we would have to have some indication that all the affected abutters who own the underlying land would agree. How close are we to obtaining that?
Um.
If, if this were to move forward.
There has been one owner who has not been at the previous meetings. So he, he has, and he and his wife have been out of loop on this. Even if you have a formal agreement, you will need him to sign off on the formal agreement. I think he is willing to look at a formal agreement, but it's gonna depend upon what's in there.
Right, that's the email we got from him.
Mm-hmm.
Certainly sounded like he was open and receptive to a discussion.
Right.
As opposed, opposed to a strict closed door.
Right.
Doesn't want to participate.
And specifically including plowing?
Specifically, that was the direction of the last meeting, that's what I told him.
Not the other provision of town.
But not the other trash and recycling pickup. So I don't wanna waste money with the town attorney drafting language if the majority of the people on that street, if there's not a consensus on the street to accept that.
And that's where I think I'm at, is that prior to having another dialogue with the residents, the only way this is gonna work is that if all of the residents who own that road will sign off on, I guess, a consensus document, and then from there, we can meet. And I guess non-binding consensus document, but if they've all come to terms on this is what they all will collectively, you know, agree to, then we're good to, to do that. But we can't negotiate with three or, you know, four out of six landowners when all six must agree to it. It's just simply a waste of time, you know? And I think the onus would be on them to try to determine what they want.
And my impression is you're, you're only gonna get a consensus possibly on the plowing issue.
Well, then that's something that they have to agree to amongst the residents, not this board. I mean, that's just my, I think the ball is in their court from the way I see it, in terms of what they're, they're demanding.
I would agree. I think we've offered a solution to this. Alls we need is buy-in from them all. But without buy-in from them all, I agree with Scott, we're just wasting our time because it's not gonna go anywhere.
To, to get off middle ground, would it be appropriate for a, a letter to the abutters indicating what we would agree to, and then take it from there?
Well, I think we already know that the majority, except one, wants the restoration of all services, trash, recycling, and plowing. One is only agreeable, possibly, to plowing only.
Possibly.
Depending on how the agreement's written, yes. He's open to discussing the plowing.
So, if we would then develop this agreement and offer it to the residents, but the agreement would be plowing only.
But a majority have said they want all.
I just, so if it's not, if, if the majority is unhappy with that, then why, why draft it?
Right. That's where I'm at.
That's where I'm at. And I, I think we have to hold tight because we're, there's no sense in us expending town resources for a document that may have to get revised numerous times before these folks reach a consensus. So the first order of business is for them to reach consensus as to what services will be provided, and then what, what the, what the framework of that agreement will be, short-term agreement. Until that happens, we have to wait.
Okay. So, request for an agenda item, I'm sorry. And so then our response to them as far as being put on an agenda would be, we'll put you on as soon as.
Exactly.
You all come to a unanimous.
Right.
Position.
Yes.
Yes.
I was gonna say. Mark?
And I don't know how everybody feels, but I would rather have a long-term agreement than a short-term agreement. I mean, let's, let's fix the solution once and for all. Let's not have to come back to the table as we've done a couple times already with this issue. Let's, you know, get a consensus of that entire Lambsen area, and then, I understand short-term, but I would rather see a long-term fix, to fix it once and for all, so that we don't have to come back and deal with this issue again.
Scott? I think the long-term fix would be the March vote where we accept, because then it, then it is long-term.
Okay, if that, if that being the avenue we have to go, I'm in favor of that. Let's, let's draft it up, let's draw it up, and let's bring it to the voters in April.
I thought the short term was just to give them the services until March.
Yeah, because between now and March, we could have snowstorms that need to be dealt with.
I'm not sure there's a consensus amongst them to have it as a public road.
Yeah. We'll find out, I guess.
Okay. The assessment recommendations tonight is Veterans Tax Credits, MAP eight, Lot twelve dash one dash thirteen, and MAP nine, Lot twenty-six dash eight.
Motion to accept the assessment recommendations?
Second. You're, indicate by saying aye, you're accepting that a motion?
Aye.
Five zero, Catherine?
Yes.
Franchise Committee update. The committee recommends that the town maintains the same franchise language as current agreement regarding the five percent franchise fee, because breaking it out to two and three percent would assume passage of the revolving fund article at town meeting, or, and we haven't had the discussion yet, structuring it as a nonprofit. Because if you leave it at five percent, the town can still, with that warrant article.
Put it into.
Put the two percent into the revolving fund.
Through.
It gives you, it gives you flexibility this way to go either direction.
So, we're, we've been talking short-term, long-term here. A short-term solution would be internally, our budget would allocate.
Right.
A two percent portion of Gulfstown TV.
Right, we would have a special article to set up that non-lapsing fund.
And it would still be the special article then next March.
Right.
And then the next time this agreement is up for review, then we could have the.
You can have the discussion again.
We can have the company divert the money at their end.
Mm-hmm. You could do that. So that's just an update. We are meeting with them tomorrow, I believe.
Thank you.
Contract for Unconnoitic Dam, the RFQ Selection Committee recommends awarding the engineering evaluation for Unconnoitic Dam to DuBois and King in the amount of nineteen thousand five hundred, and that contract was in your signature folder.
I make a motion, if I may, that we award the engineering, the contract for engineering evaluation of Unconnoitic Dam to DuBois and King in the amount of nineteen thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
And any discussion? Any comments by our Director of Public Works? In favor of the motion in the capes saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Write the contract, Carl.
You can do that.
Yeah, I, I did that.
You did?
Yes.
The appointment?
Oh, the, oh, appointment, no. Cable TV appointment, sorry, I was on one cable and didn't get to the other one. The vacancy in the Cable TV Committee was posted for the required thirty days. The boards received three applications to fill the position. The applicants are the former GTV Coordinator Dick Gagnon, our current alternate member Charles Minnick, and a former Committee Member Carol Huxell. Their volunteer applications are in your packets.
Is this for one, one position?
Yeah, there's one regular member position opening right now.
I believe when we've done this, filling of vacancies in the past, we saw, we threw a polling situation, if I remember correctly. We can each, each cast a vote for a person, and if there's a decision at that point, we move on. But if there's no, no decision, then we can discuss and lead to changing our minds. Any other options, Scott?
I just wanted to let the board know that I did contact Dick, and I contacted Charles Minnick, did not contact Carol Huxell. But one of the questions that I had for Dick was just to, it's, I could see where it might be slightly awkward to have the former person who did it for seven, fifteen or seventeen years be on a committee then overseeing a, a new person, and, and Dick was like very honest in saying he has no intention whatsoever of trying to Monday morning quarterback anybody. He believes passionately on, about public access television and, you know, the public, you know, component of it, and that's, that's truly his, you know, his desire. So he, in terms of, he, he made me feel very comfortable, you know, in, in that respect. I talked to, I talked to Charles. Charles is a, from his perspective, he does a cooking show, and he's been an alternate, and he'd like to be a, a full member. And he said that what he would bring to the table is that he's somebody who is a producer. So he'd bring the producer, he's, he'd be the only one, he said, who would be on the committee who actually produces a show. Carol, as, you know, most of us know Carol, she's been here for various things. I didn't contact her, but I know she's interested as well.
According to your rules procedure that you brought up earlier, Mr. Chairman, it says the board, during the appointment process, each Board of Selectmen member shall have the opportunity to speak regarding qualifications of any nominees. Candidates are selected by motion and second recognized by presiding officer following a, a majority affirmative vote. In the event there are more candidates for vacancies than positions, the presiding officer shall call each candidate by name, and members shall vote yea, provided however that members have only the number of votes for which there are vacancies.
So in this case, I'm gonna call a person's name, and you have one vote, and you can say yes or no.
Before, before we get to that point, I think we have the opportunity for.
You do.
A comment, which I would like.
Go ahead and continue our comment.
I would, I would, I would just like to follow up on that. The fact that we have three people that are applying basically for one position, one of those applicants is currently an alternate on that committee. And the purpose of alternates on committees is when you generally have new people coming onto a committee, depending on how the openings are at a particular point in time, we generally put a new person on as an alternate so that they can get a handle on the committee. This person is on that, and to me, and for my vote, I would suggest that the alternate be moved to the full-time position, and that one of the other members be put into the alternate. And it's very possible that we might have more than one, do we have more than one alternate available?
Not sure.
If we have, currently have one alternate, and we take an alternate and put it into the full membership, then we would have two alternates.
These, excuse me, but these are requests for appointment to a full-time committee position, correct?
Yes, but Selectmen Devans is asking are there alternate positions open, so whoever doesn't get the regular would be alternate.
I, I, I would, I would follow up with what that, what you just said was, because if you go to Carol Huxell's, she specifically said, I would like to volunteer as an alternate to GTV Committee.
Mm-hmm.
And we already have one person who is an alternate who is looking to go to full membership.
I'm, I'm willing to review alternates depending on the outcome of the first round of voting. Any discussion here? Mark?
I know who I'm ready to vote for.
Yeah.
Each board member has one vote. I'll take them in the order. They're presented in our read-ahead packet. Dick Gagnon?
Aye.
Yes.
That's a no or a yes?
I get one vote for.
You only have one vote.
For this round of polling on that name?
Nay. If you're looking for a vote.
We've never done it that way. It's just simply you record two, and then you go on to the next.
Fine.
Do you have five?
Thank you. Next one is Charles Minnick?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes on my point. Well, we've reached a majority vote.
Which now opens an alternate position.
Yes, it does. Phil, that's, brings up your point. We have cleared an alternate. Does any member wish to take the remaining?
Well, he, he says that he was, and I guess the question, if I can, question I had was prior to this, do we have an alternate position that was open?
Well, we've gotta backfill his position.
We're backfilling his.
He's asking if there's yet another one.
We have, we have three alternates. We had three alternates before that vote. Charles is one.
Okay.
And they were also Barbara, David.
Okay, so we have one alternate position available.
Right.
Okay, we'll do a selection for filling the alternate position. In the order, they're presented on our read-ahead packet. Any votes for Mr. Gagnon being an alternate?
Yes.
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 Votes for Carol Huxell being alternate?
Yes.
And I abstain. So it's, we had three.
If I, if I could state that, it was very clear on Carol's application that she was looking to be an alternate. On Dick's, it did not say whether he wanted to be an alternate or not, so.
If Ms. Dick Gagnon doesn't accept the alternate, then it'll come back to this board.
We did.
Town and Municipallez Report. Congratulations. Not even seven o'clock yet.
Yeah.
That means we get a break?
The overview. No, no, no. We have no overview. That was supposed to start at six-thirty.
No selection?
It'll be, I'll do.
Oh, so you, what you're saying is we're behind schedule?
Yes, yes. I'll abbreviate my overview.
Well, the agenda item is the start of a 2013 budget process. And we begin with, Sue, an overview of what's going to happen in this current season of budget deliberations.
Thank you. It's, it's just a review of the process. As we all know, Town of Goffstown is a municipal Budget Act town. We follow Chapter Thirty-two, state law. We also use the official ballot, which is our say forty thirteen. Tonight and the following three weeks, you will have presentations by department heads of their budgets. The timeline is also provided in your budget books because following that, you'll have your deliberative sessions. The Budget Committee has been invited to attend these joint meetings. This is in lieu of last year's process, when we met on a Saturday. So there were four nights of presentations. Members of the public who are watching tonight can follow along with the budget books that are online under Town Departments.
are online under Town Departments, Town Offices, Finance, and they can just click on 2013 Department Head budgets. In the, during the process, the role of the department heads is to advise the governing body, being the Board of Selectmen, on what they need to operate their departments. They've looked at all options in meeting those needs and proposed the most efficient and cost-effective methods. The role of the selectmen in the select, in this process is to listen to department heads regarding their needs and explore all options in meeting those needs. The selectmen will deliberate the budget for three weeks after we complete our presentations. The selectmen prioritize the community needs as presented by the department heads. The selectmen also have the challenge of looking at all funding sources, whether that's a use of fund balance, long-term notes of bonds, fees for service, and offsetting revenues from grants. The selectmen, when they conclude, which will be by the end of October, will have more finalized numbers. They will have the insurance numbers, because rates are set around mid-October. They will also have the charge of developing the default budget, which must be presented by the first public hearing of the Budget Committee, which is no later than January 15, 2013. The role of the Budget Committee in this process is to review the selectmen's budget, which they will get by November 5, and determine if any changes need to be made. They may call back department heads to answer questions or to clarify their budget requests. Not unlike the selectmen, the Budget Committee prioritizes the requests and develops the number for the operating budget article. So the number that goes on the operating budget article is the Budget Committee's. Following the first public hearing, January, by January 15, the Budget Committee will determine if they need any testimony, if they heard any testimony at that public hearing that would change their budget number. That in turn provides the selectmen an opportunity that any capital item may be cut from the budget, but if the selectmen feel it's important to keep it in, they can go forward with separate numbers to the deliberative session, or they can put it on as a special article. So that's the process that we follow. We, we do have budget assumptions that at this point in time, that I'd like to distribute to all of you. Pass that around that way. So very quickly, these are the assumptions made throughout the budget, and I've put them in categories for you. Wage adjustments. We have three collective bargaining agreements, fire, police, and dispatching clerks, and the non-union, and a 3.25% adjustment on July 1, 2013 was placed in there. Also on EMS, you have a per diem paramedic rate change, and that the chief will go over when he presents his budget. Regarding hours, you will see that the GTV PEG Coordinator is proposed to change from a part-time to a full-time. Also, the police department is restoring funding for the patrolman, effective July 1, 2013, and part-time custodian, effective April 1, 2013. Those are the only hour changes. Benefits, we are assuming a 10% increase on health and dental, short-term disability, long-term disability, and life insurance. Those actual rates will be set sometime in October, and the selectmen should have those rates before they conclude their budget to give to the Budget Committee. Workers' compensation insurance, the formula we're using of the 2012 classification rates, an estimated 9% increase, and this is estimated because this is the most it can go up, because we are part of the TRIM program with LGC, times a .85 modification rate, minus a 20% TRIM discount rate. And again, these are set in October. New Hampshire Retirement System, we do not have certified rates at this point in time, so what we used were their uncertified rates in the annual report. Group one would be at 10.77%, group two, police, 25.30%, and fire at 27.74%.
Sue, can I just clarify for those listening? Group two does not get social security, the employer does not pay-
And the employee does not.
And the employee does not pay.
Correct. This is their only source of-
I just wanted to clarify that for those watching.
Property liability insurance, those rates will be set in October. Again, those are capped at no more than 9%. Last year, we did not see a rate increase in property liability insurance, but we did have a valuation increase, which led to, I think, a $320 increase town-wide. So, so you won't see much of a change estimated there. Electricity assumes a 5% increase in rates next year. Heating oil, we took a three-year average for gallons used, and we multiplied it by our contracted rate of 2.945 per gallon. Propane, we took a three-year average of gallons used, and we multiplied that by our contracted rate of 1.495 per gallon. Gasoline, we took a three-year average again on consumption, and we multiplied that by our contracted rate of 2.866 per gallon. Diesel, we took the three-year average gallons, multiplied it by 3.25 per gallon, but that contract has expired. We do not, at this time, have another contracted rate, and because it's so high, we may be going with the state, but I'll discuss that with you later. And the state doesn't get a fixed price, the state gets a fixed differential, so the transportation costs are fixed, but you pay rack price. But when it's this high, you have nothing to lose doing rack price plus a differential. So that may be the direction to go.
Selectmen's, Sue, what was your, are you going to go over revenue assumptions? Because we, we recently signed off on a document that our townwide assessment was one, half of 1% increase-
1% increase in valuation.
Right, in valuation.
We usually do that when we get, no. We, no, you don't do that until you do your tax rate calculation, and we usually don't do that until we set this year's tax rate, which will be probably the first week of October.
All right. At some point, though, I would like to know what that translates into in terms of dollars.
And during your deliberations, you'll have that information. So that was my fast overview. I have asked the Assistant Town Administrator to give you an overview of CIP, where it's been, where it's going in the future, because you're going to find, as you see the budget process develop here, that that is a driving force in the numbers that you're seeing.
We have members of the Budget Committee at our table. Would you identify yourself?
Elizabeth Dabril.
Joe Spurle.
Thank you, Joe. Elizabeth.
A member in the back.
And far back, the Goffstown Water Precinct, Village Precinct, representative to the Budget Committee, Dick, thank you.
Derek, I have your handouts.
Yes, if you could pass them over to me.
Are you going to do a PowerPoint?
I am going to do a quick PowerPoint, because, and what Sue asked me to do was look at the last ten years of CIP to, for years.
Why don't you just give me the whole packet? I'll just tell them.
You only have one. Sue has it on her side.
So you need one, or you got one?
Oh, really?
David, pass these down around the one.
Scott, you see a PowerPoint, whatever.
Oh, you know what? David, you need one.
I've got one right here.
I'm sorry.
Oh. There's an extension where they're in the podium.
Derek, are these for?
Yes, those are for everybody.
Okay. Thank you.
Does everybody have a copy?
The handout that Catherine has passed around includes a brief definition of what capital improvement project is, and it also provides some highlights over the past ten years in the bulleted portion at the bottom. And then on the second page, it really shows the ten-year history. Capital Improvement Program is really a tool that, you know, a lot of people usually talk about it as a planning tool. I see it as a, it bridges the gap from the master plan, the vision of what our community is going to move towards, and it bridges that, that planning to the actual fiscal realities of budgeting for those capital improvements and those facility improvements. Over the past ten years, CIP has not been 100% funded for a variety of reasons, and that increases CIP annually. This is, and the way I've set up these charts are, each, you'll have each budgetary year, and the red is the CIP that the Planning Board approves. That does not make a distinction of whether or not it'll be in the operating budget, or whether it'll be required to be a special article, an item such as a bond. The blue represents the Board of Selectmen recommendation that go on to the ballot. In this case, the darker blue is the portion of CIP that's maintained in the operating budget, and the light blue is special articles. Green are the recommendations made by the Budget Committee. And then in the orange and the, a darker brown shows what the voters approved at town meeting. Again, the budget and the special articles. And as you can see, it has that, that upward trend. But I think, the other thing about CIP is, CIP, when they come up with their matrix, they look six years total. They look the next budget year and then five years out, and that's where I think it really shows kind of how this increase is coming and what you have coming down for the next five years. So when you look at the 2003 to 2009 CIP, this is the, the number that CIP Committee came up with in the five years out. This was the, in this year, the highlights include the first year, there was a request to bond municipal recycling, which failed at town meeting. That next meeting, that CIP number gets bumped up, and the five years out get bumped up as well. On your handout, under 2004, it talks about that bond for municipal curbside recycling, and on the right, it has failed. That should read "passed," because it did pass in 2004. Caught that after I printed them all out, and so-
I was beginning to wonder how we haven't got it funded. I looked down and never saw it again.
Yeah. 2003, and also, another highlight is, in 2004 through, let's see, through 2007, is the road plan when it appeared as special articles, separate from the operating budget. Again, 2005, because there is that gap, there is that gap between what CIP approves and the Planning Board approves, and to what actually, you've got this gap right here between what the voters pass. And that, again, in 2005, it ratchets up a little bit more, and the five years out continue to increase. And you see this for the next years. In 2000, in 2006, you start seeing, let's see, in this one, in 2007, it starts ratcheting up as the fire department starts planning for major improvements to their fire stations, as well as bond requests to purchase Barnard Perry property, which eventually failed. And again, this continues to ratchet up, going through. Now, this spike here in 2010, during the CIP process, there was a $7 million bond to, for a central fire station, which eventually was not included in the budgets that went before the voters. But again, you keep increasing. And then this year, for 2013 CIP, again, this is just what the CIP Committee has approved, because it has not been approved by the Planning Board to date, is 9.62 million. And what I consider is, these are capital improvements. That is, the 6.2 million that you'll see on Sue's summary sheet, that includes vehicles, land improvements, as well as a $3.3 million bond for fire station improvements, which would appear as a special article. It has that offsetting revenue that first year, but the community is still paying for it. So that's kind of where, and you can see the out years. In, in the out years, you have other improvements that, as a planning tool, departments have come forward and said, "These are things we're going to near in future years," so.
What's 2014?
2014, the actual figure?
I don't see the bar on the-
It's because, I, I show that in lighter pink.
Oh.
So that's the 2014, it's pushed all the way out to the right, but it's, it's over 6 million. 2016, 6 million. 2017 has a large jump up to 9 million.
Okay.
Again.
And we limited this presentation to just the town side, because that's all we're dealing with here.
Yeah, this is town side.
Right, so it's no schools.
No schools, none of the other precincts or anything.
This is, by the way, this is a really, really good illustration, I think, so I commend you for putting it together. I would be curious to know where our operating budget also stood, because I think we all know around this table, we've been doing this for a few years, that in many cases, and when you look at the last three years in particular, I mean, that's where we really took it on the chin in terms of the economic, dealing with the economic crisis. You'll see that, you know, we were spending, you know, 2.5 million, voters approved, and then last year, I think it was like a half a million or a million dollars in CIP-type monies. And that's simply because we were not, we just did not, the voters did not approve capital expenditures due to the economic times, but that doesn't alleviate, you know, the need for, the needs that, that we have. But Derek, if I could just make, make one point, and that is, as an assumption, shall we say, is that unlike the federal government, who is, what, 16 trillion, is it, in debt now? The town of Goffstown probably has gotten three consecutive years of clean opinions from our auditors, and our fund balance is the strongest it's been in a very, very long time. Our auditors told us that we have a very, very strong capacity to either use our fund balance for a one-time purchase, or we have a tremendous ability to bond. Our bond rate, you know, is, the amount that we are, currently have outstanding in debt is extremely low. Actually, I believe the auditor said shockingly low for a town our size. So in terms of when we talk about our budget, for those in the Budget Committee and those in the audience, we, in the town of Goffstown, are in a very good position in terms of the tools that we have at our disposal. We have tremendous bonding capacity, and although that, politically, it takes 60% to pass a bond, in terms of our capacity to bond, it's outstanding. And we also have the capacity and the ability to use fund balance for a one-time expenditure to alleviate the need to increase taxes. So, and that is because this board, prior boards, budget committees, voters, the way things have shaped out, we have been very conservative, and that has increased our fund balance. Unlike places in California that are greatly in debt, this town in particular, and New Hampshire overall, most communities are fairly conservative, we're the opposite. I think we have, you've seen, we've made some deferrals on larger capital projects, but it's not like we're in debt, because it's the exact opposite. We have a lot of capacity to do different things, and bonding is one of them.
And that's really all I have for you, Sue. Just wanted me to show how it's been trending, and you can see it's trending up, and from that five-year projection, it will continue to trend up.
And I think this is important, because that's what's driving such an increase in our budget.
Right.
But what's interesting is that even when times were good, the voters never approved even $4 million worth of CIP spending.
Correct, but when you make deferrals, now all of a sudden, the 4 million becomes 5, the 5 becomes 6, the 6 becomes 7, so they don't go away necessarily, and, you know, I think we have to give ourselves some, you know, I think the chief explained it in his presentation, the fire chief. We went down two pieces of fire equipment that are $1 million or more, 2 million, 1.5 million, an engine and a, and a ladder truck. That's 1.5 million dollars that we did not spend, because the fire chief kind of reorganized his fleet. Getting grants saved us another million dollars. So, so those are, and I'm, and I'm not just touting the fire chief, I mean, I, a lot of our department heads are securing grants and changing things up to try to make things work, but, you know, it's not like we're sitting on our hands not doing anything. We are reacting to it, but this is the elephant in the room. I mean, we have to replace vehicles, we have to put roofs on buildings and, you know, do those things.
But Elizabeth's right, the closest we ever got to $4 million was 2010-
Right.
And voter-approved.
Right, but it's, it's a far cry when you look at 2012, Sue, when you're looking at around $1 million or so in capital improvement expenditures, to historically, over the last eight years, spending around 3.5 million.
Oh, yeah.
So that's a big difference.
My point is more that, that there's a difference between having the need and- Funding it. Well, and, and making sure the voters understand the need, because whether they just don't want to fund it, or they don't understand it, they haven't been funding it.
And I think the biggest one is the road program. I mean, the road program should, should be around a 2.5 million dollar road program. We, we're funding it this year at a half a million dollars. And for many of you, you're saying, "Oh, well-" And for many of you, you're saying, "Oh, well, that doesn't really..." All the construction, all the roads that we've done in Pinnardville, well, all of those came out of different projects, but when you, next year is when you're really going to see the impact of a very minimal road program expenditure, because all of our projects now are, for the most part, caught up. I don't know if Carl's here or not, but that's just the reality.
Thank you, Derek.
And so, Sue, this evening, we're going to hear from Library and then Park and Rec.
Yes.
Can I ask, so that, Sue, you and finance have adequate opportunities to secure this information, but could we get five-year minimum? And if it's 10, it'd be great, but there's some cost drivers that are just gone so crazy. And retirement is one of them, and we see it big time in this budget due to some downshifting. And so, I'd like to see salary as one line, healthcare, you know, our benefits in another, retirement would be part of the benefits, and...
But that's a separate line in the budget.
Right, separate line in the budget. And then, things like, we already have capital stuff, fuel and energy type.
Can I just ask a question? You're asking for the totals for the year?
Yeah.
And that, okay, I guess the only concern that I have is, when you're comparing those numbers, it could be very misleading, because we need to take into account the number of full-time and part-time employees that those numbers represent for the year. In other words, you're comparing a total amount that consists of benefits for employees.
Yeah.
And if you're going to compare that total number, that bottom-line number, for different years, those numbers don't necessarily reflect anything meaningful as a total number compared to a total number unless you take into the account how many full-time and part-time employees each one of those yearly numbers represents.
Well, that's a valid point. There could be 100 employees in one year, and then five years later, it's 20 less or 20 more.
And I guess I appreciate...
You've got to know that in order to look at it.
And I guess I appreciate that, but I'm just looking at, you know, these reports that I have here don't tell me if we replaced three, you know, three police cruisers, or two, or one, or none. I'm just looking at, what is the bottom line? So, we're paying X amount in salary for all of our, for our town, we're paying X amount in benefits, and I want to see the rate of cost growth.
So, here's categories, but then below that state how many full-time equivalent employees there are in that particular year.
That's going to be more difficult to get.
I mean, how much more difficult? Like, a lot of labor hours to put that together? It's not something you can quickly get?
No.
But the other thing is, pretty much, an Excel spreadsheet, just looking past...
The rest we have, yes.
See, I guess when you look at the bottom line, the number, you know, I don't, do we necessarily vote because we have X amount of full-time and part-time equivalents? I'm just looking at...
No, but he doesn't want you to say, "Oh, that's a stagnant number of employees."
Yeah, because you could take a look at that number, and as a bottom-line number, one figure, comparing it on a year-to-year basis over a span of years, you could look at that number, and you can make whatever assumption you want out of that.
Right, but I...
But what does that number represent? How many employees? It couldn't, as a chance, for example, library, one year. Okay, and I'm just saying that because they happen to be in front of us, okay? And I'm looking, and I see library, okay? One year, library dropped an assistant director, library director, okay? The number changes. So, you can look at the library's salaries, and look at, "Oh, wow, the library, they did a great job, okay?" Their numbers went down, but all of a sudden, if you look into the number, how did it go down? All of a sudden, they don't have an assistant director. So, what did that number mean to you, without knowing that information?
Well, I don't want to argue...
You can take, make whatever assumption you want out of it.
I don't want to argue all night over this, but if you're trying to address a budget and look at forecasting for three or five years out, you need to know what happened in the last, say, five or 10 years. So, you know, if our retirement costs have gone up 150% over the last 10 years, I think that we should, we need to know about that. If our health insurance has gone up, that's what allows us to make decisions, because some of this growth is not sustainable.
But if you're going to look at numbers, you're going to say, "Wow, look, our retirement numbers are going up, we have to do something about it." And you have no idea that each one of those years, let's say, I'm just going to throw something out, each one of those years, you added one more employee, and that's why it went up. You can come to two different conclusions, and each one means nothing.
We can give you the rates, retirement rates, over the past five years.
I'm not going to, I mean, I have no authority to ask for the information unless the board gives it to me. If not, then I'll have to get it myself, so it's, that's your call.
But you're suggesting we have salary, health, and retirement, those are categories that are spread over all the departments. You're wishing to see those categories as all together in one display?
All in one.
Yeah.
I mean, I want to know what the town of Goffstown spent on its town employees for healthcare, for retirement, and, because I think that's a very telling story. I mean, some of these things, we don't have any control over, but by the same token, the costs are, they're just going up and up and up, so either you continue to pass that along to the taxpayer, or you have to come up with another way of dealing with it, but...
There's a closing.
Yes, I, I personally would...
Oh.
Those are categories that I have always wanted to see town-wide in one, one display, rather than split between departments. And due consideration of Selectman's concerns, I will try to weather through those understandings when we look at those numbers. But those numbers will help us in that discussion, Phil.
I don't, don't misunderstand.
Any other ideas here?
Can I just make a comment? Don't, not to misunderstand me, I'm not opposed to the number being...
There's something, because you could sit down and do...
The point that I'm making, though, is, is that in order for that number to really mean anything, outside of the fact that the size of the number, in order for it to mean anything, you have to, it has to reflect how many employees are in that number.
So, at that point, looking at the display, which I would like to have prepared, if there are conclusions we wish to draw, because they're going up or down, and then we can have that discussion.
And it would be easiest to do by account line, and benefits, that account line town-wide includes health, dental, short-term, long-term. So, you don't need those all broken out, do you? Okay. And, yeah, we can run those reports.
I don't want to do it easy, I don't want to make life miserable.
And I'll check with HR to see if they maintain the number of full-time, part-time employees during that five-year period.
Or perhaps people that are on something that are not necessarily employees, elected officials. Does it gross appropriate?
I'm not sure where you're going.
If people are taking healthcare because they're an elected official, and then they, but they reimburse the town, that's, they're paying 100% of the cost?
That, that's not reflected in, they are paying 100%, and that's not reflected in your budget reports, because their payment's in a liability fund.
Okay, only thing I'm saying is, because we gross appropriate, and just wanted to make sure that it wasn't going to be a misleading number.
Yeah.
But it's certainly important to know when those, when we look at those escalating costs, and I agree with Phil, how many positions that involves, otherwise, you can't put in any real context.
I think for the most part, and I could be, I don't think I'm wrong here, we have had very stagnant, there's really been no new hires.
So, this thing, the cutbacks, in the past five years.
I think, yeah, if anything, only, I think, five years ago was the Safer Grant, right? Or close to it?
About five.
About five. And other than that, if anything, we've had cuts.
Right.
Still good numbers to know, though.
Right. So, it's been fairly stagnant.
Any other overview, comments, questions, concerns? Let's take the first department.
Library. Bring up another chair.
Tab 6 in our budget book.
No, I'm sure she'll be fine in the back. You'll hear her just fine.
Thank you, Cassie. Always got to be a backup.
Elizabeth?
Mm-hmm.
These are the extras.
Colored and hole-punched.
Did you get one, Jim?
No, I guess they're coming around.
Oh, okay.
I don't have a bunch of color.
I'm Lisa Ayadice, and I'm just going to give you an overview of how we came up with the sheets that you have in front of you for our budget. So, how did the library Board of Trustees arrive at the numbers for the 2013 budget? There were several things to consider. First, an increase of downshifting of costs from the state, which I'm sure that anyone who's put together a budget lately can attest to. In order to serve the needs of our patrons, Goffstown Public Library, along with other members of the G-Milks Consortium, is supplementing the van-delivery service of materials that is provided by the state. In recent years, not only has the number of deliveries per week been decreased, but the amount of materials allowed per library has decreased as well. The state has also decreased or eliminated funding for databases, databases that are heavily used by library patrons. The most recent cut in funding is now News Bank, which gives access to the union leader and Concord Monitor, among others. While we have requested money to fund these databases, we have been selective, making sure that the databases we opted to fund are databases that are actually used by our patrons. And they are, and it's shown in an increase of almost 31% over last year's statistics. The second thing that we considered is our community outreach programs, which is an opportunity to reach people who are not library users. Community outreach also provides enhanced relationships with local businesses, and the chance to meet and work with other community members and organizers to strengthen the network in town. While it is often said that it takes a village to raise a child, it also takes a town with involved and dedicated people to build a community. Finally, our statistical usage. The library revamped the summer reading program this year, and enjoyed, for us, record-breaking numbers. Due to the staff's diligence in seeing what has or has not worked in the past, we offered a wider variety of programs, over 21% more, and the resulting attendance increased almost 11%. In addition to those overall numbers, shifting the focus on the types of events we offered netted us a magnificent find. We have managed to capture the highly elusive species known as the teenager. Teen classes and events are up almost 67%, and teen attendance for those programs has increased 173%. Our statistics for our downloadable service has also increased dramatically, 116%, as more and more patrons enter the e-reader arena. In conclusion, the resulting budget that we propose is an overall increase of 2.04%. And thanks to revenue generated by Cassie, which more accurately calculates printing charges, and trust fund revenue, this results in a bottom-line increase of 1.58% that the Board of Trustees has submitted. So, now, we will go on to the PowerPoint portion of our show. So, these are our hours of operation. We're open 51 hours per week for 10 months, and 46 hours per week for July and August. This is our organizational chart, and here, full-time is presumed 40 hours per week. And here, we have some comparisons from August 2011 to August 2012. We do have a decrease in cardholders, and this reflects the three-year cardholder database purge. And our current cardholders actually represent 42% of the population of Goffstown. August was our busiest month on record. We circulated approximately 9,700 items, and that equals to approximately 422 pieces per day. We changed our summer reading program from six weeks to eight weeks, and shifting our focus on the types of events we offer. This was done because of the toll it was taking on staff, and the net effect of the change in the programming is that the toll on the staff is reduced, and more community members are able to access services. The cross-training and internal promotion has gone extremely smoothly, and proven to be an invaluable asset. This chart is of the state library shifts from 2008 through 2012. As you can see, in 2008, the subscription databases, state-funded, all the way down. 2009, you can see a little bit of a shift, where the library picked up ancestry.com. 2010, you can see that we decided that Biography Resource Center was not affordable, and the state declined to fund that. 2011, we added Heritage Quest to the Goffstown library budget. And for 2012, you can see pretty much the only thing the state is funding there is EBSCO Host, which is general and magazine and newspaper index. And you can see down the bottom, a sample of the magazines that it has, which pretty much everybody here is familiar with, at least one of those titles, I would hope.
That's only a portion of the items that EBSCO Host holds. If the state decides to drop funding on that, it's unsustainable in, at the local level. The state shifting is significant and ongoing. Sorry, Lisa.
Oh, be my best test.
It's consistent with the trending, I think, that Scott wanted to see. This chart is critical to the budget of services we can provide.
And you can see up at the top, the interlibrary loan/fan-delivery service that was, that's funded by the state, well, used to be funded by the state, mostly. There were three deliveries per week from 2008 to 2010, and unlimited bins or bags per trip, and patrons were waiting approximately one week for the materials that their requests did.
Oops, sorry.
2011, we were limited to one bin and limited to 10 bags per trip. They reduced the number of deliveries to two per week, and patrons were experiencing approximately a two-week wait time for their materials. 2012, still two deliveries per week, but now we're limited to one bin and five bags per trip. Patrons are waiting two to three weeks for their items, and the G-Milks Consortium decided to supplement an extra delivery per week. And there's the cost of that right there.
The van service that the state implemented was based on a design that was instituted and promoted by G-Milks in concert with the current state librarian. To see this reduction, the Board of Trustees worked closely through Diane with G-Milks and directly with the state librarian to try and address this. It will not be addressed in this budget cycle, and G-Milks has grave concerns that it will be addressed again. So, that appears as though it will be a cost that we will bear from this point going forward, and it's not insignificant.
Lisa, got a question here.
Yeah, just follow-up on that, so that my understanding is clear. The $1,300 supplement for that, is that, who's paying for that, that $1,300?
That's the G-Milks Consortium.
Each public library is contributing that same amount of money for the delivery.
No, that, well, that was my question.
For one year.
So, $1,300 for that one-year supplemental is being paid by Goffstown Public Library.
Right.
Has it improved that waiting time, reduced that waiting time?
Yes, definitely. It definitely has improved it. It's not as fast as it used to be previously, but it's definitely improved what we were experiencing. Having the inability to send everything that we had, and you know how small our space is, was just un, it was unimaginable. So, we, it was, we were forced to pay for delivery.
A three-week wait, if you're a student looking for a certain text...
You failed the test.
If you're a businessman looking for something to, that you can't afford to buy, but you need that resource.
By the time I get it, it's outdated.
Yeah. And then that's a further waste, because we're, the material's not being used that's arrived for them, and then we're sending it. I mean, it's just not a good efficient system unless we pay for it.
So, what has that driven it down to? So, it's still at a two, three-week deal, or...
No, it can be two weeks.
Okay.
It's pretty inconsistent, though.
So, clearly, without the supplemental... So clearly, without the supplemental supplement, you're looking at three weeks or more.
Right.
With it, you're looking at two?
Two.
Okay.
Yeah, and without the supplemental delivery, we might have been forced, as a consortium, to reduce services to the communities that we serve. We wouldn't be able to allow the lending and borrowing of everything that we do now. So for instance, we might say, okay, a new item can't be borrowed by another community for a year. So that's just a reduction of service that our communities shouldn't have to live with.
Not to mention reducing the efficiency of the communal purchasing.
Right.
Exactly.
So you think that the nature of, like, state budgeting, et cetera, that this is going to be here to stay?
That's...
That's what you think?
Yeah.
My other question is, I mean, I don't use interlibrary loan, but my family does, and two weeks is not that great. Actually, that's kind of crappy, too, but is it, could I assume that if you spent $2,600, you'd be able to institute it once a week? Or now it doesn't work?
It's once a week now.
I know that.
But if we were, and what we have done is, we've instituted a delivery that we can afford, which is once a week. We can't, as a consortium, each of us can't contribute more than...
I hear you. Okay, so it's not like a couple of libraries might want to chip in a little bit more, but the consortium itself could not sustain putting more money than the $1,300.
I think what the issue is, Scott, it's the bins and the bags, because that's the amount, the volume that you can handle.
That's the amount that the state is willing to assume. The state was previously, if you look in 2008, willing to allow whatever needed to come and was requested was provided. Now they are, they have equalized sending more deliveries to more remote areas by reducing the quantity in the most heavily-used areas.
And the supplemental delivery is contracted with a private courier service, so we're not using the state system at all for that one delivery a week.
Any other questions on this slide?
Clearly shows the downshifting.
Oh, yeah.
And this is just an overview of Gee Milks, Inc., which is a nonprofit consortium. We kind of show this slide every year. It has a $350,000 library system that gives us automated circulation, the online card catalog, and all the Web 2.0 features that our community can handle. It has two full-time employees employed by the consortium. They have a system administrator and a systems librarian. We get a large discount on research database subscriptions, and most of them we wouldn't be able to afford otherwise, such as that Biography Resource Center, which not only wouldn't be affordable by GPL, but it was also not used enough for us to justify expending money on it. It has the ability for our community members to visit other libraries in the consortium and check out materials, and the coordination of weekly material delivery to public library members to supplement the losses in delivery by the New Hampshire State Library. And next, we have some shots of GPL in action. We have the babysitter certification, the Not in Our Town, which was a program about bullying. There was Tai Chi Day out on our lovely lawn. They had hula in the kula.
So cute.
There was a teen iron chef competition, and they had Cooking is a Dream for a younger audience. There was the Goffstown Area Deployed Families Dinner, and there's a shot of a nice outdoor scene from open-mic night at Apothica. So our community outreach and partnering activities. Outreach presents ever-changing challenges in an ever-changing landscape. It will look different day to day and week to week depending on the opportunities that are developed or present themselves. The reason that we do community outreach and partnering is threefold. First is that we have very limited space, and this allows the library operations to continue without interruption and provides flexible time and space outside of the physical facility. The second reason we do it is to develop relationships with all the constituencies in town. That means we work to work with businesses. We are always looking to work with the other community organizers to make the network in town as strong as it can be. And of course, most importantly, to reach people who have not traditionally been library users. So you can see that we have home delivery to residents that can't visit the library, temporary assistance, or scheduled on a regular basis. We have the business outreach. We've partnered with Apothica, Ace Hardware, Sandy's Garden Center, and St. Anselm's College. We have deployed family support, and this includes monthly support dinners and resource development for deployed families, including a Facebook page. This is in partnership with local churches, businesses, the New Hampshire National Guard, Easter Seals, and others. We partner with the Goffstown Community Clothing Center. We partner with the Food Pantry. We did publicity and drop-off for Grow a Row. We have school partnerships with classrooms and staff, all four public schools, as well as preschools and private. We also partner with Rotary Club, Main Street, Parks and Rec, and we also partner with the Marine Corps for their Toys for Tots.
Lisa, I just want to give you a kudos. I got your, well, the library's Facebook stuff about, oh, there's a meeting for, I mean, all these different subgroups, subcommittees or something, but I thought that was kind of cool. So I know that we have, we just instituted a policy ourselves, but we just haven't yet really, we never did the, I thought we did.
No, not yet. It's on the to-do.
Oh, well, we have to come talk to you.
Forefront.
If you would like a workshop on how to do this, I'm sure you could talk to our staff.
No, I think we're going to be a little bit more...
That was a little tongue-in-cheek, Scott.
Yeah, I know we're not going to do, like, interactive. We're just going to do push, more than...
Right, but the information that you just mentioned is pushed automatically from our online calendar system.
Oh.
So once we put it into the calendar, it just automatically...
Yeah, you don't have to then...
Twitter, Facebook.
Technology, baby.
So we don't touch it once, we just do it one time.
No, and I say that because we haven't, well, I'll be candid, we haven't been as quick as I thought we would be on this topic, but when we had the gentleman come in here talking about, well, I didn't know, well, you know, whether it be Nixle or whether it be through, you know, smartphones or whatever, you can get that message out, you know, like that. So if you deviate, then, you know, you can do it so quickly.
That was Manchester's message, not Goffstown's message, because if it was on our website and we had social media, it would have automatically gone to him, but it has to be on the website first.
In that case, what the gentleman was talking about, it's on the Friends of the Goffstown Rail Trail website, but not the town.
Pause on this a minute and just drink in that photo.
Nice.
And then drink in your CIP budget.
Does it show the restored chimney on the backside?
In the dark, it doesn't, but the chimney's looking good.
It doesn't, okay.
But what this photo does show you is how beautiful the soffiting and the trim work is, and that this building truly is a big part of what establishes the small-town character in New Hampshire. That maintenance is in CIP this cycle, and I want at least a slowdown for you to see it.
Actually, the doors look awesome.
You do what, you do the doors?
Yeah, we don't open that door anymore.
The front doors, the new doors.
They were restored. They're the original 100-and-something-year-old wood, and, yeah, they're beautiful.
Yeah, Phil was around when they first delivered.
Exactly.
Our 2012 operating budget, you can see the figure there. For 2013, our requested budget, 709, 389,000. Minimal increases in budget lines outside the fixed nondiscretionary costs. And you can see the little footnote, like I stated before, represents a 2.04% overall increase over 2012, and that's dropped to 1.58% after revenue. And as requested, we broke it down into sections. We have our HR budget. Regular wages was a decrease of $514. We have the equivalent of 9.25 FTEs with our 15 staff members. The number represents no steps, no additional positions, and 3.25% kola for the staff. Benefits have increased $1,800, Scott.
Just, we did, anytime we have a department that has, like, a retirement of a long-term employee, that's factored into this, too, so, okay.
Correct.
Because sometimes we're going to get, how is the library able to do it? And a lot of times, that was just significant, right?
Yes.
We had a lengthy discussion about this at the board level, too.
Okay.
We do performance reviews annually. The results are viewed by the full Board of Trustees. We've had a realignment and cross-training of staff. The staff hours have been trimmed for the past three years, reducing our staff numbers by a net of 22 hours. And it's important to remember that there's no break room. They eat lunch behind the brick wall at the circulation desk, and that's if they opt not to walk to their car or eat under, eat under the squirrels in our front yard. We ask much, we receive that and more from our staff. They've worked to work with us and our constraints, and we uphold our obligation to them. And the realignment and cross-training of staff is an ongoing effort to best utilize their strengths and to maintain optimum coverage with skeletal staffing. So moving on to our operating budget, we showed the lines that changed in any way. Most are a slight increase. There is one decrease on that slide. Professional dues for the trustees have gone up to the tune of $12 per year per member for membership into the New Hampshire Library Trustees Association. Travel expenses increased slightly due to the new mileage charge. Consulting services, we added $2,500. We are in the process of writing a site-specific personnel manual, and that's going to need legal review. Postage increased $150, and heating oil has decreased $391. Installation of the radiant flooring in the children's room has allowed us to use less oil. Telecommunications, increase of $761. The library is joining the town-wide Comcast system for consistency and decreased circulation disruption. The equipment maintenance charges is an increase of almost $1,000. That's estimated use for another three years after the final payment. This is the second of three years on our copy machine lease, and Cassie is part of that.
No.
No? That's just the printers?
That's just the copy.
Okay, disregard that last statement. We have $3,800 for building maintenance charges. That's for the interior and exterior. And the increase is to be more responsive to the need for repairs and maintenance of the building, which is over 100 years old. And we are also coming up with a draft maintenance plan, so we can proactively manage the maintenance and hopefully eliminate having to put fires out, so to speak, if something breaks down.
Does maintenance include service to the heating plant?
Yes.
Yes. We added $1,000 for annual hedge trimming. Maintenance supplies, we increased $300 just because of an overall increase in the cost of materials.
Can I back up for a second?
Sure.
So DPW or Parks and Rec does do a lot of this?
They do provide some help, yeah.
Okay, but not all that...
Not all of it.
Necessary?
No, we have a really good coordinated effort with Parks and Rec and the groundskeeper, and it works really well, except that they don't have the time to do everything. And that hedge that we purchased along High Street is a monster.
Right, okay.
We increased the Gee Milks line, $567. That's the estimated dues for 2013, and that includes the supplemental weekly delivery of the materials due to state cutbacks.
So part of that $1,300 you saw is...
Built into that line.
Built into that.
Electronic services, we have an increase of $4,150. That's a downshift of cost from the state library, ancestry.com, Heritage Quest, both two very heavily-used databases of ours, $500 for News Bank, and $1,300 to supplement the state van service.
So it was not a cheap...
No.
My mistake, sir.
And our CIP request, remember that lovely photo of the building? Not going to be looking that lovely if we don't have some preventive slash repairs. We have rotted wood. We have rotted wood in the elevator room. There's damage to the soffits and trim. There's the need for cleaning, sanding, priming, and painting. We have rotted clapboards, and this maintenance invites much more significant and costly damage, and I spelled it with little dollar signs for S's, just for effect. So while that picture of the building at night looked very pretty, we do have some other unglamorous photos of the building that actually show, yeah, it needs some help.
So these were the lines that had changes in them, everything else was...
Any questions?
Library trustees did a good job summarizing all that and cut it to the quick, but exactly what changed. Board members want to extract any more information from the source of all the information in the town? You know, we are a college town. What is your interaction with the St. A students? Is it minimal?
It's greater than it used to be. We did a carding event last October at St. Anselm College, and just like we do with all the other schools in Goffstown, and it went very well. We netted not a huge number of cardholders. It was mostly there, we were mostly there to let them know that we are available to them, just like their library is available to the community of Goffstown on weekends when we're not open and evenings. It was a great event. I'm not sure it will be duplicated this year. We've lost our contact at the Geisel Library, so, but we have a number of faculty who use our library and a good number of students who find us.
Thank you.
And a good number of community members who use their library, so it's a nice reciprocal relationship.
I think it's fair to say that most of the questions from the Budget Committee, based upon my years being on the committee, will probably center around the CIP request. So perhaps maybe getting color photos of what some of the issues are and/or any bids that you have gotten. And I think one question that you're going to hear from the committee, and maybe you want to answer it proactively, is can this be done in a phased-in approach? I mean, can we not make it a CIP item? Is it possible to do $5,000 or $10,000 a year over a three-year period over just a one, you know, getting it done at one time? I'm sure you'll hear that.
What issue with that, though, when you're dealing with scaffolding?
I don't know, scaffolding and, I know.
Or a lift.
I know, I know that.
You know, a $5,000 piece of equipment to come in three times, that's 15 grand.
No, and I understand, but that's something that they're going to have to address, so...
We are asking Spider-Man to move into town.
Anything else?
Almost. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's the only one that came with that that I didn't have to add. They're professionals at this. I know. What didn't have to add? He likes to date every piece of paper.
Oh, yeah.
I had to write it on the other pieces that I...
I like that, too.
Towards the end of this budget season, we'll have five different varieties of budget, unless they're dated, which one is the most current? Well, which information came before? Well, which information came before, or which information came after? Waiting to get up here anxiously is our Parks and Rec department.
I'm curious if the entire Budget Committee was invited tonight.
We were.
Okay.
We received several emails.
Rick, hello.
Okay.
Does, uh?
I know I saw a guy today, and he couldn't be here. He told me he had an unexpected guest.
I, I don't know where, a couple, Phil Kendall's starting a new job, today was his first day, and he had to stay late, and.
Okay, I didn't know whether it was just assigned to.
Nope, we were just collecting people who came.
Yes.
Yes.
You know what?
It was in the mail baskets.
Yeah, no, I forgot my name of the room. Rick, you have an extra copy of mine in the other room?
Anybody else here? Which copy is that?
That's one that was in your mail baskets, so just hand out.
Thanks. Was it in here?
No, it was in your mail basket.
Okay, thank you.
There's three whole bunch ones in your mail baskets.
Oh, no, no, I, I don't know what that was.
Yes, I didn't hold on to.
Brain spasm.
Say we have to add the date to this one, too. We're on tab five of our folder, White Book. I don't have any slides for you all tonight.
Thank you.
Don't. Nope, nothing that exciting.
Thank you.
But, we'll listen. You know, first, I, just to, I mean, I think we all know what Parks and Recreation is in the town of Goffstown. But, just to give you a quick overview of what is Parks and Recreation. And first, I always say it's Pampers to Grampers. And that means you have programs that you offer for Pampers to Grampers. Not too much in the Pampers area, but we offer programs, and we have seasonal programs. We have our basketball program in the wintertime. We have our activity period in the wintertime. We have our summer, during the summer, we have our swim lessons, our summer camps, our open, our open swim times at the pools. We do rail trail walks. We do the suppers for the seniors. We do Hershey Track and Field. We do archery. We do zumbas. We do, do a lot of different things. That's programmatically. So, you have programs within our Parks and Recreation program. We also have facilities, facilities within our, within our town that we, we own and we operate. Those facilities are Roy Park. Roy Park has a tennis court in bad shape. It has a basketball court. It has a swimming pool. It has a playground in bad shape. It has a rectangular field softball field. We have Saret Field Complex. Saret Field has three rectangular fields and a Little League baseball field. All has irrigation. We have Barnard Park. Barnard Park has a walking track, has a football field with irrigation. It has a playground. It has pavilion. It has a swimming pool. It has four tennis courts. We have our Parks and Recreation Building, the physical building that we reside in. It has a forty-by-forty community room, which we hold a lot of different activities. We have a room that is open to, to our community organizations that have standing meetings, monthly meetings. We, we also allow our, our local athletic teams to host their annual or monthly meetings as well. So, we have, we have a lot. We have these programs going, and we have facilities going. And I think that's important to understand, because if you go and you look at our facilities, we're making some really strong headway in, I call it, taking back the facilities, taking back your, your parks. For instance, we've done some wonderful things in, with our swimming pools, thanks to everybody involved. I mean, it's not, it's you folks around this table, it's you folks out there, how you doing? It's, it's the community coming back to take, take pride in what we have in these facilities. We still have a lot of work ahead of us. They're, they're tired, but they're slowly getting back. This year, on a side note, our swimming pools, the Barnard Pool, I, I can't believe the number of people that we saw at the Barnard Pool this year. And, and just the number of people coming back to these facilities. And, and the "thank you" here, you know, hey, thank you, that liner's beautiful, you know, these type of things. So, we're bringing back that sense of pride to these facilities. Unfortunately, with the part that we all hate, is all that is money. And, and that's what we have to do, is we have to look at these things, and we have to say, all right, it's gonna take some, some, some dollar allocations to start to revamp these facilities and bring them back, okay? And the Park and Rec Commission, in their next meeting, is gonna really dig deep and really start to look at some of the projects. We've made, I've made a list of some different projects. What we've developed in 2009, 2009, I believe it was, the town had on the ballot, Article Fifteen, to allow the town to charge fees for programs and fees for renting out your facilities, okay? So, that allowed an income stream to come in. That really didn't take effect until 2011. In 2011, we began to charge fees, and what we did is, is the fees were, for anybody that is renting our facility, there's a fee. A field, a field space, there's a fee. Programs, what we did is we designed a system where if it's a league-oriented type of program, your basketball leagues, your softball leagues, your lacrosse leagues, your men's basketball leagues, your co-ed volleyball pickup things, those type of things, really where you kinda have officials and maybe not officials, where it becomes costly, we, we developed a fee system for them. So, that is now in place, all right? The, the intent of these fees are to start to help you to repair some of your facilities, all right? These fees aren't like the answer to it all, but they're also, they're definitely a way to start to implement the process, to help, help assist in, in the upkeep of these facilities and the development of these facilities. So, that's where we've kinda come, and now this is where we are. This is my third year coming into doing this with you all. And as I said earlier, I mean, we're very, very appreciative of this, this budget has had some increases. And it's increases due to the fact showing a true operational budget of what it takes to run the Parks and Recreation Department. And, and we're doing very well. If you'd like, what I like to do is, what I gave is a quick little budget highlight, is what I call it. Kinda just did line by line. The lines, the lines that really are either an increase or a slight decrease is what you see in front of you. As you heard in, in other discussions with our regular wages, full-time wage line, it's a forty-seven-hundred dollar increase. But that's based on, once again, you know, if there is a COLA of a three-point-two-five, if that is approved, then that would go up. If it's not, then that is, it's a flat line, it's a level line. As far as our, our seasonal wage line goes, the seasonal wage line is basically all our lifeguards, our playground staff, seasonal maintenance, groundskeepers type of thing, total of eighteen people, plus some individuals during the year that help out with their volleyball program. That stays level. The benefit, the operation benefit line decreases by forty-five-hundred, so it's basically a wash with the regular wage line. Employee development stays level. Contracting services, just a slight little increase, what we do with, since we do have the revolving fund, we, like the EMS, the library, who has revolving funds, pay an administrative service fee back to, to the town for the, the services provided. So, it's a total of like twelve-hundred dollars, so it only changes this line by two hundred, two hundred bucks. Two hundred and eighty, excuse me. The office supply line, that one jumps. I mean, I can remember when I was first here, and it was only a hundred and twenty dollars. And the big reason this is, this is a jump here is we've actually now have a HP LaserJet printer. That was a hand-me-down from the town offices over to us, and we were gifted two ink cartridges. And the ink cartridges are gone. Well, the costs of those ink cartridges are quite a bit, so that's, that's where you'll see an increase there. Furniture fixtures, we brought that down. As you heard, you know, your propane line, your heating line, those lines, I had a hard time with, I'll be totally honest with you. And, you know, we basically said, let's keep them level at this time. You have a contract up to a certain part of next fiscal year, well, calendar year, however I state that.
We do the heating season.
Yeah, the heating, the heating season. So, I think that would keep, will keep that level. The oil, just go up a little bit there. Electricity, we represented a five percent increase there. Actually, I did six-point-five. Reason I did six-point-five with electricity is because we now have a light that is at the Roy Park facility in the parking lot. Never worked, ever worked, and now it works. And then we also are proposing a couple of security lights at both parks. One under the pavilion at Barnard and at Roy, and then one at the poolhouse at both pools on a suggestion from Chief Sullivan. He said it might help when his crew comes driving through, they can get a better visual. So, I did the six-point-five percent.
Just to add in, I know that, that has been a problem, because tri-town soccer, or somebody stole all the crossbars from the soccer goals this summer that were at the fields, and so they, I mean, you can't put those in a shed, and they had to buy new ones, so there is, there are security issues, so maybe the lights will help.
I hope. I mean, we've had bleachers stolen, we've had plaques stolen, we've had, it's a hard time. The vehicle fuel, I'm going out on a limb on this one, and I'm actually decreasing it by four hundred and fourteen dollars. I could be wrong, but I just look at our usage. Our usage is going down. I mean, we don't seem to be using as much vehicle fuel. It's not a huge decrease, it's only four hundred bucks, but I'm bringing it down a little bit. And I look at it, too, as, as far as what we're doing as a cost, I mean, we're good up until July first of 2013 at the set rate that we have. So, that means we got all of July, August, which are probably your heavy season for us, fuel-wise. Our fuel really slows down probably October. From October till April, our fuel consumption is very low. From May till September, from May, actually, from May till probably September, it's, it's on its high end. So. Park operation line, the park operation line, that basically is consisting of all, all your facilities that I just spoke to you about. So, within that, you have the fields, each field has a, well, Saret Fields have an irrigation, Barnard Field has an irrigation. So, you're paying, you're paying for the fixes, the opening, the closing of those lines, repairs. These are older systems. It's inevitable, something's always gone wrong with it. You're also paying for fertilization. We do our own fertilization. We fertilize, we aerate, and we'll broadcast seed. Things we cannot do is we can't do grub control, nor can we do slit seeding, all right? So, we contract that, that out. And with, with your fields, you have to, you have to do that every single year. You have to do that. If you do not do this, your fields will just be destroyed and, and not worthy of playing on. So, it's, we have to think of that. You know, we have, I mean, drive around and look at some of our fences. Have you ever looked at the fences at Barnard Park, Roy Park? Seriously, have you looked at them? They're all falling over. We, we gotta fix these things and bring them back. And we have around our pool, there are thirteen fence poles that are completely rotted. So, you can sit here and push on the fence, and the whole thing's just gonna fall over. One galvanized twelve-foot pole is about sixty-five dollars, seventy dollars for just the pole. What we're starting to do is, if you notice, there is a fence over at the Roy Park facility along the front side. That was to hopefully alleviate people driving out there and doing donuts on the lawn, and also get more control of who's going out there. But what I'm getting at is Mike Garette and myself put that fence in our, we did it ourselves. We had the material, we put it in. These are the things that we're looking at doing, is we'll fix the fences, but we gotta get the material cost, we gotta get the material, and that has a cost to it. There's a lot, there's a lot in there. This amount of repairs that we have, our pavilions, the pavilions, all the roofs, each need new roofing. What we did is a Band-Aid effect, and it looks pretty darn good, is we, we actually painted the siding on the pavilions. We tried this. And the paint's still there, didn't peel off, and it looks pretty darn good. So, there's a little bit of a savings, but, you know, so we try to do different things like that. Our skate park, our skate park is in dire need. That fence is all destroyed over there. We gotta repair that. There's just little, little patches in the asphalt that we have to do over there just to keep it safe. All those monies come out of this line. The pool operation line, I brought, we brought that down a little bit to, brought it down by five hundred dollars. The pools, you gotta remember, these are forty-year-old pools. We've done an awful lot with these pools. You close the pools down, you button them up, nobody, nobody is gonna guarantee when they close that pool that those lines are gonna be solid for the opening of the next season. There's been too many hands in the cookie jar and too many repairs, too many joints in, in the different lines that are there. So, if you don't have any money in there to repair a line when you open it up, then you're not gonna open it up. Our programs, our programs, it's basically the same number that we budgeted for last year. That's the program cost. I mean, that includes your program cost from everything from the Goffstown Gallup all the way down to the senior supper. It's, that's all your, your true cost. What the commissioners did do is in the, in the rec equipment line, that's a, that's a large increase, that's a very large increase there. We've heard from a lot of our users that we don't really have a decent basketball court. We don't have an outdoor court. They're telling us they go to Riddlebook, Riddlebook School over in Bedford, because it's a nicer court. They're going elsewhere because it's a nicer court. Well, if we wanna go with that road, I guess you're fine, but why not have some pride and say, come on and play here on our court, it's your town, play right here? So, what that is, it's basically replacing some of the hoops, the two hoops that are there, and also putting down some new surface just to paint it, that's all. So, I mean, all in all, I mean, the Parks and Rec budget is like a four percent increase proposed budget for this 2013 year. And as I said, what, what the commissioners are really using, looking at using those dollars for the, from the revolving fund are to go and offset the cost. For instance, in our CIP proposal, CIP proposal, one of the proposals is to take the Barnard Pavilion, retrofit it, so that we can put some movable sides on, enclose it, but you also do it so that it can be open for your general population, general population, excuse me. General use, thank you. But during our camp time, we gotta have a place for the kids to go when it's bad weather, and that, that'll help that process. So, they're proposing a seventeen, eighteen-thousand-dollar withdrawal from the revolving fund to pay, to help pay for the forty-thousand-dollar retrofit. That's one project. So, now, what we're doing in the September fifteenth meeting is they had the list, they So now, what we're doing in the September fifteenth meeting is they had the list, they got the list, and now we have to start saying, where do these monies go to which project?
So these CIP numbers that we have, you don't know how much of each of those numbers would be offset by revenue?
At this very moment. Now, I can tell you the pavilion, yes, I can tell you that one.
Okay, so, but I'm looking at which ones are parks and rec. You've got a tennis court?
Yep.
For a hundred and ten thousand?
Yeah.
That's the Roy Park tennis court?
Yes.
Just Roy Park?
Yes.
How, how, how does it cost a hundred and ten thousand?
We do the whole thing.
We're gonna rip the whole thing up and?
You gotta rip that, there's no fixing that court. There's no, there's no, there's no patch job, there's no, it's, it's gone.
Is it one court, or is it more than?
It's three courts.
Three courts? Okay.
And I encourage, I encourage you all, the budget committee folks, you wanna call me and I'll bring you on a tour, I would love to bring you on a tour and, and just show you, show you what we're talking about. I mean, those tennis courts over at Roy Park, we're at the point now, we're getting close, you might as well put some caution tape around the entire fence.
Okay.
Because they don't even go on it.
What, how are they at Barnard?
They're good. They were redone, I don't know how many years ago, but they're good.
So those are, those are solid for the time being?
Yeah.
So then there's also thirty-five thousand for park improvements, is that the pavilion?
Yeah, yes.
So both pavilions?
Nope, that's just Barnard.
Okay. And then, I'm, sorry, I'm just trying to make sure I know the CIP items that are yours.
Are you going off on the ones that were accepted, or the ones that were just out of the list?
None have been accepted yet.
Yeah.
This is the, these were the numbers from CIP.
Yeah, so just the ones that have made it from CIP, so planning has signed off on those?
Yeah, no.
Planning has not?
No.
Okay.
They're taking up again this Thursday night, I believe.
I don't know, I didn't see it on the agenda, but.
Yeah, it's, it's down at the bottom, the action items come first.
Should be, should be Thursday.
So these were the best numbers we had at the time we put together?
Yes.
Why don't you take us through each CIP line, break that you have?
Sure, if you want, yeah, I could do that.
I think Elizabeth identified the first two under.
What you have is you have Roy Park Playground.
Are you going in the order there, in the?
I'm going in the order, I have them listed in my.
Well, everyone's got them in tab seven of your book?
I don't have tab seven, I created my own book.
Oh, okay. First one is tennis courts.
That's the hundred and ten thousand.
Yes. Yep. Then next one is park improvements, and that's Barnard Pavilion?
That's the pavilion.
For thirty-five thousand.
Yep.
Anything under vehicles?
Nothing.
Nothing under buildings? I think you go to improvements other than land?
Yeah, yes.
You got the playground expansion for forty thousand?
Forty thousand, that's Roy Park Expansion, actually Expansion, Revitalization. Roy Park, the, you're over there.
Yeah.
A little metal swing set and a slide and.
So we're getting rid of that and putting in a new one?
Putting in some different structures.
Okay. And hasn't that, has that been up before and it's been bumped?
Yes.
Okay.
Next one I see is Barnard Track.
Barnard Track, the rehab of the track. That one, that one is, I, I can't remember how it was finally written up. Basically what we have is you have, we're gonna split, we proposed, proposed to split the cost with, with the school. And it's about twenty-five thousand dollars just to, and this is just a Band-Aid, you gotta understand this, this is just a Band-Aid. All right? To come in and cut out the cracks that are present, fill them, and then come over with an inch of asphalt across the top of that, and you're looking at like twenty-five, twenty-five thousand dollars. I just got Pike Industries is gonna give me their official quote, Sue, so I'll have that official quote. The school, what we then said is, this would make it safe for our community as a walking, running track, all right? The school uses it as a track training facility. So therefore, what their need would be is to have lane lines, have it seal-coated and then put lane lines down. That alone is probably at least another twenty-five thousand dollars. So the whole thing is, I think it's written up as a fifty thousand dollar, I can't remember how it was totally written up. That was all at the last minute.
This is the first time I've seen the thirty-one thousand, I thought it was more like twenty-five thousand when you tracked me.
Yes, and then in the CIP meeting, the last one I was at, got readjusted.
Got adjusted then, okay.
So would that allow the schools to host track meets there?
No, no, no. No, it's not, the facility is not, it's not adequate enough to, to ho, to host a meet.
How long could this hold? As a Band-Aid, how long do you think this could hold the track over?
Couldn't tell you. I'm not, I mean, a year, two years, three years.
Okay. But we're probably, we're not looking at more than that, we're not looking at ten-year fix?
No, 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 no. If you want a ten-year fix, then you're talking a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to come in and regrade, rip it all up, and put down some new stuff.
I think the challenge there is you'd have to put in drainage, and that's why it'd be so expensive, correct?
Yes, because that's part of your issue. That is your issue.
The drainage and the subbase for the whole.
Is your issue.
Structure.
Right. So we're kinda looking at that one as a phase. I mean, you gotta do, you have to do something, because if you don't fix it, you're, you're basically liable.
So if, if hypothetically, the new track got approved at the high school, would you still do this?
No.
Okay.
That's, if, if, if I may, if that, if the new track came in over at the high school, we wouldn't do that. And that was one reason why, that is still on their agenda, I believe, okay? I'm not speaking for them, it's just my own speaking. That's still on the agenda, and I think that's the focus, is to have a track, an official track, turf, et cetera, over at the high school on their property. In that case, we don't need that. So hence the reason, throw this little Band-Aid on there, then maybe over time, that goes through, this Band-Aid got us through, because then what we can do is, the options are now endless. Now, do you grind it all up, make it knit pack, and it becomes just a walking track? Do you, do you grind it all up, put all nice green grass down, realign everything so you have more rectangular field space, which we all need? Do you, see, see where I'm going?
Right.
And these are all what-ifs, they're on a list of what-ifs, but that's where you can now go. Do you take your playground, do you take your playground, bring it up front so it's not out in the back? You can do a lot more. So that was really the reason I'm saying, that's just through the Band-Aid, and if that pursuit is, comes to fruition, there's the facility.
Was there any discussion by the park commissioners on the long-range plans for Barnard and Perry property?
Yes.
Give us some idea.
But it's not in next few years.
It's not, it's not, it's not in the budget, but this sort of, where eventually would that go then? You're seeing in your budget world?
We've, we've officially got a drawing finally made up of what the architect design would look like, a conceptual design, what it would look like. That one there, I think, is gonna definitely take a lot of creative planning. It's gonna be more, I think, involvement as a community. I think that's gonna be a capital campaign type of thing. And I think that's where the commission is now looking at, is okay, how do we position ourselves to now begin that process? We also, the next true process is to have a grading plan done. I mean, that's the, you know, you have this architectural drawing laid out.
But tonight, I only wanted to put that into the record, that eventually at some point, whether it's ten or fifteen years from now, that will be before the town for development.
Yes.
And we realize it's gonna be a significant capital improvement. You've not only got your fields, you've got a half-mile of road network that doesn't even exist now, that has to be built, and plus all the building support structures. So thank you for letting us know that commissioners are still aware of that property and moving on it.
And just why I'm saying that, other things that the commissioners, commissioners think about all the time too, is the rail trail, the whole rail trail system. There's a lot of recreational activity things that are going on within our community. And this is all running through their, their, their minds, and this is where we gotta try and set that big picture.
The, the hundred and twenty thousand for the rail trails that's in CIP, is that offset by grants, or is that outweigh strictly? There's a hundred and twenty thousand, under, under land and improvements, this year's, it's the second line, under cemetery expansion, rails to trails, there's a hundred and twenty thousand in there for seat work.
It's on this sheet here, Elizabeth?
Uh, it's on the very first page of the CIP.
Yes, Derek?
I, I believe it's for DPW culvert repair. I believe the, the grant portion, the.
Okay, yes, you're ringing, thank you, Derek.
So by the county land, right?
Yes.
There are, there are two severely damaged.
Yeah.
Infrastructure problems at the rail trail location near the county complex. One is a granite culvert, it's historic of nature, seventy yards long, and some large granite blocks have been blown inside the culvert that need to be repaired. And then we're having a landslide on the downslope side of that embankment. And the earth in the vicinity of the rail trail is, actually has a nine-inch dip in it, how it's sliding down the hill. So there are some long-term and expensive solutions that the town is facing.
So there's no offsetting revenue for that one twenty?
So that's, that, that money, no. There isn't.
Oh, actually, if I can.
And it's not, it's not for the actual trail surface?
Right.
That the user's gonna see?
Yeah. Yeah, I think one of those was added at one point at the CIP last year before it came to the planning board, but was withdrawn because of a priority issue on some, on some of the things. And it's not necessarily, even though it's listed down there as like a rail trail improvement, it's not specifically, as, as was mentioned, to the walking surface. It's really a drainage issue, it's irrelevant of whether or not there's a walking trail up above, but the water, water has to pass underneath that whole area, and that's, that's where there is an issue that the town is responsible for.
It, it won't take much more of a failure to turn a seventy-foot-deep valley into a seventy-foot-deep lake.
Okay.
And at that point, you don't, you don't want that to happen because it would be even more expensive to find a solution.
Okay.
So the, and to answer the other question, the rail surface improvement and any drainage to the left and right of the immediate trail, normal storm drainage is still being funded by grants that we apply for.
Okay.
And nibble it away over the years as we build the rail trail. Back to your park department here now.
I mean, that, that's basically all I have for you. Open for questions.
I have a few more.
Sure.
So you said that they started charging the fees in 2011, and as I understood it, it was going to be initially a very low fee and a gradual buildup over five years. So has the revenue, has the, how is the revenue doing compared to last year's? Revenue up?
Yes, it is. I mean, what we did is you made a small increase of, of five dollars, and a ten-dollar increase in our playground program and a five-dollar increase in our.
That doesn't work.
In our other programming.
Sorry?
Is the revenue up? Yes, it's up.
Just don't step on it.
Is it up because of your five-dollar increase? You know, our participation level is probably equivalent to, in the programs, you know, you go, like, our next big one is basketball.
Mm-hmm.
All right, I mean, you had three hundred and ninety-something kids in basketball. So, you know, come the end of this fiscal, the end of 2012, I could answer that question for basketball. As far as our playground program, I think our playground program, truthfully, was down in numbers this year, financial numbers. Similar in participation numbers, what we saw is a higher number of people that were on a full scholarship, people that are on, you know, the federal lunch program. We saw that number increase.
But overall, participation's down?
Nope.
No, it's flat?
Yeah, it's about the same.
Okay.
About the same.
So you didn't see a reaction to the participation numbers as a result of the fees?
No, no.
Good, good. Sue, a question for you. Where's the transparency on the revolving fund? Do we know how it's accumulating each year, and do we have definitions of the, of the withdrawals?
We just emailed the selectmen the quarterly balances and the account. Do you wanna see the ins and outs, or do you just wanna see the balance each quarter?
It's fine for the balance right now. And if we have a question, we can ask about the major withdrawals of the various funds.
So that level of scholarship is determined, did you say by the, by the lunch?
By the commissioner.
But do they use the, the same matrix as the schools use for?
We follow the same guideline that the schools do, which is the federal school.
Okay, but you make your own calculations, you don't, you don't get the info from the schools to, it doesn't transfer. Okay. Okay.
Large number of folks, it's amazing.
If they build this track, if this track goes through at the high school, would your department be in charge of maintaining it?
I wouldn't think so.
They don't maintain the school grounds now, do you?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, they do.
Hold on, let's look at this. Right now, we mow all the fields. We mow all the fields, which is quite substantial, because your athletic fields have to be mowed three times a week, just to keep them at their correct height. We line, we line all the fields, we line all the varsity field and practice fields for the very first time, and then they take over and they line the fields for game-ready. The middle school fields, we take full, full charge of, lining the whole time, mowing the whole time. So on an athletic field such as that, if you go to a turf field, the only thing you're gonna have is the, the lining. That's it, you're not gonna have any mowing whatsoever, obviously. So, but I hope somebody with wisdom builds in, there is maintenance involved with those turf fields, you do have to maintain them.
Well, that's what, that's what I was gonna ask, how did the maintenance cost for that stack up against maintenance for a, a grass field?
I haven't done my homework on it, Elizabeth, to really speak clearly on it, but you do have to agitate the, you know, the material that's in there. It's all ground rubber, so you have to come through and you have to agitate that to fluff it back up, you have to replenish that material after so many, so many years. So there is some maintenance involved to it.
Does it require special equipment?
Yeah, I would think so.
Is there vacuuming to it?
No. Oh, actually, what you can do, some of the fields actually have a machine that rolls over with a magnet type of thing, and, and you go right over the field and it collects like, you know, like helmets?
Right.
You know how you got the grommets from the snaps, those break off, fall in the field? So you pick those things up, stuff like that.
Supposed to be made out of brass, though.
Yeah, and you're not picking it up, huh?
You have to have a special brass magnet.
You can check with St. Anselm College, because they went through this with their field.
Yes, they did.
Yeah, but I'm sure, but it's all I'm saying, and I don't know enough about it. I mean, I'd be glad to look into it, but I don't necessarily have to at this moment. But there is some maintenance in there, and whomever and whenever any of these things are done, please, we gotta think of that. You're gonna have some.
And what would that do for the field situation? I mean, I know that there's a real field shortage right now. Would having that ma, I, I'm just trying to get a, a sense of how bad the shortage is. Would having a field like that and allowing us to maybe reconfigure Barnard, would that be a significant difference, or? be a significant difference, or would it just be a drop in the bucket?
I think where your difference comes into play is, and if it gets lights on it, that changes things. You can, you can extend your usage time in your fall season when daylight savings comes in. So it allows more opportunity to have more practice time, more community use. Is that a huge difference?
But there's also a lot of logistics to take into account, because there's competing interest for that. We've been through this before.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Who gets to use what field, who gets priorities, you know?
You, you build, everybody's gonna want it. Everybody's gonna want it. And you're right, you're right, Collins. But, but I think, you know, it helps with that process, and it will allow-
Sure.
-more time. I think we gotta, in our community, we absolutely need to understand, and it's hard, that we have to rotate our fields. We literally need to make a field to sit there and sit a season out. Sit a season out, and we can't do that.
But we're kinda doing it, aren't we, with the middle field at Saret this year? It's kinda now?
Haphazardly, haphazardly. We're in the process.
Right, it's not as out as it should be.
I'm hoping it's gonna work, but what we're doing on our middle field is we're just calling it a game field only. So we used to have practices on it every night. We're saying, nope, it's only a game field. So we push the practices out to other, you know, Roy Park, to everywhere we can find, and just to see how that, how that field will react. But I think that's the thing, is we need to literally, a field needs to take a full season of rest, and then, so it can grab. And then you have, you have your high usage. Barnard football field is, to me, a utility field. That's a utility field. That just gets pounded, pounded, pounded. Five days a week of intense practice, and it's a utility field.
So investing in the fertilization and the grub control and some of these other things we're doing helps, but it, it's not gonna-
It's not the 100% answer, but it, but the more you do of that, the stronger the integrity of that field becomes, and it can stay longer.
New question, new area. This past year, with all of the, the sewer commissioner did rebuilding of the entire sewer line, Mass Road and Pinnardville, the staging, the construction staging for much of that gravel and rock and everything else was in what we know as a parking lot for Saret Field. Have the commissioners' park talked about improvements to the Saret Field parking?
It's on the list, Dave.
On the list, okay. It's not, it's not the best parking area.
It's dirt, it's uneven, at least it could be graded, and maybe take some of that material and put it back over it and ride over it with a steamroller thing there and help it out. We actually had, we have on a list over there to maybe look at developing some bomb shelter bathroom facility slash storage. There's no storage over there. I mean, things get stolen, I mean, as leechers.
A permanent building that would be protect, more protective of storage.
Yeah, I mean, that's on a list, but-
I see the, just the entrance into that parking lot is not the safest entrance, because you're, you're driving through an unprotected ditch that drops off quite a bit.
Yeah. There's a little gate, there's a little rail there, but it's not much, yeah.
Thank you.
I have one more, sorry.
Oh, sure.
When you said the 4% increase-
Yes.
Is that a 4% increase, does that take into account the changes in revenue?
No, it does not.
Okay, so we don't actually know what the net increase is yet.
No.
No.
Well, you'd have to add the loss of, what, 12,000 in revenue? Is it 12,000?
12,053.
That, I mean, that's a loss of 12,053?
Yeah, because that was the revenue last year, it won't be the revenue this year.
I thought it was 24 last year.
No. $12,053.
It was, at that number, and then everything got cut and slashed, so-
So the revenue was readjusted.
So the revenue was readjusted to 12,53.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, so once that's factored in, what are we talking?
About 31,000.
This is not counting anything in CIP, this is just operating.
31,954.
Okay.
On the pool operation lines, you know, we talked about it at our meetings, the issues that we have with the pools at Barnard Park, do you feel that the $558 decrease, will that, will that hurt you if we need to get into some serious stuff as we talked about in other meetings?
No, I think, there's like $4,000, roughly in there to do a major repair, and I think your average, it's around 2,300, 2,400 bucks to do a repair of your lines. So that number right there, with the two pools, that's what I factored in. That, it is a little buffer. So I think that'd be okay.
Okay.
We did look, and I haven't gotten the official number yet, Mark, so that you do know, is, Mark asked, we use an awful lot of chlorine, we use a ton of chlorine, and if we, if we were to use a chlorine buffer type of system, and I'm looking at the chemical, the amount you'd have to put in to match the amount that we're using, and then the dollar amount for that chemical, it might be the same as what we're using. So that's what I'm trying to get some numbers from Blue Dolphin on, just so to answer your question on that one.
Question?
Yes.
Dave, do you know when we're gonna see the construction-
Excuse me?
Rick.
Okay.
Dave, Rick.
Dave, okay. Well, I just didn't know what you're doing there.
You know, we're gonna see the construction of the pavilion at the Parks and Rec Building?
The one that was donated?
Yeah.
Good question.
Is he still willing to donate it after all this time?
Yes, yes. Lead Dog is still willing to donate it, and plans on doing it, and some situations occurred.
We need to have a report from the 250th Celebration Committee. Both co-committee chairs are here tonight, but news, okay, we'll bypass that.
Thank you.
Sure. Good point. Any further comments?
Committed reports?
Rick, thank you for the briefing tonight.
Sure. Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome.
No, I'm talking to him.
I'm thinking about that, 'cause you may want these, the next discussion appears to be rather lengthy. So it's 20 of 9 o'clock, we're on a 10-minute adjournment. Okay, 10th of September, we just took a 10-minute break, and we're back on our agenda. The item is a selectman's discussion, starting off at old business. First item on the agenda then is a Class 6 road, Shanty Road. And we've had some discussion in the last two sessions about work that a abutter desires to do on that road, specifically removing some seven trees which were flagged, and building up of the road surface in a low point, and there's an issue of a four-inch PVC pipe that was installed. And the issue is that there's improvements to a Class 6 road needs to be done with, only upon the selectman's approval. We have a, comments that were provided to us from the Director of Public Works. Board has had a chance to review those, or do we wanna discuss them, any impacts?
Yeah, just a couple of observations from my trip out there on Sunday. I noticed beside, I did see the trees that were tagged, also the drainage is totally inadequate, something certainly obviously needs to be done with that. But I also noticed that down at the end, where he's got his log yard, he's now starting to cut into the, to the, well, as you're heading out, it's on the left-hand side, just before you get to the end of it, he's cutting in. I don't know if it's on his property or town property, and he's also taking the large rocks that he's pulling out of there and almost building a stone wall of these huge boulders, and I don't know if that's within the Class 6 road or where that is, but I mean, there's, so there's, I think there's a bunch of issues that, you know, need to be addressed. He's also, if you notice, as he's bringing in the gravel, he's probably bringing in knotweed seed, because if you look at the very entrance, there's a big infestation, an old infestation, where some old gravel is placed. I imagine that's where he placed the first loads of gravel. And then as you get out a little bit further in, you'll see some newer gravel, and sure enough, you're starting to see new knotweed establishing itself there. So, I mean, I think maybe he needs to have some, some education as to where he's getting his seed source, or his gravel source from, and just, you know, being educated as to how to avoid invasive species like that. So I think there's a number of issues. It's not to say that I object to him, you know, improving access to his property, he's certainly entitled to that. I just think there needs to be some guidance as to how, how it's done properly.
Phil?
Yeah, I guess I'm not, I'm not comfortable with the, my understanding is that the request that we have is permission to cut trees.
Seven specific trees.
Right, right, okay.
And retroactive permission for the improvements to the road.
Right, okay, but as far as the trees, I guess I'm not comfortable with making any termination on it, because we don't know who owns those trees. And I think what, part of the reason why I wanted input from Public Works was just for a little bit of clarity on some of these things, kind of what we have authority and what we don't have authority. And with it, the understanding is on a Class 6 road, the only thing the town has is an easement, that's all we have. So we don't own any land, we don't own the land that's underneath the traveled way, because all we have is the easement that allows to pass.
Yeah.
Okay, so the maintenance, that's part of the reason why we don't do maintenance, 'cause we don't own it, it's just, it's just a right to pass. So I guess it's not clear to me, okay, as exactly where the right to pass is, because the right to pass, my understanding of an easement, when you have the right to pass, is that unless it's specifically staked out, surveyed with a right to pass, how you get from point A to point B can vary a little bit to the right or the left by a foot or two foot. So I don't know if it's up to us to determine where the edge of the right-of-way is on the road, as long as it doesn't materially-
If I could take up that first point, Phil, Director of Public Works has indicated that the ownership is to the center line of what would be the right-of-way, which the center line is somewhere in the middle, near the middle of the existing gravel lane.
Oh, okay, so-
So would, let me finish, please. Would it be appropriate for Sue to send a, a letter to the abutters saying, "Abutter A, there are three trees that are on your land up to the center line at a certain location, they're flagged. Would you give permission for those three trees to be removed?" Then the selectman would endorse that recommendation and allow them to be cut.
But I guess the question, though, that I have, especially from the letter from Carl, is, is that something that we really, do we really get into that? Because what you, what we, the difficulty that the board has always run into on Class 6 roads is the board winds up being the intervenors on property owners' disputes.
Unfortunately, yes. We have a, there's a town easement to have a Class 6 right-of-way, and we're intervening on behalf of one of the abutters to seek, in order for us to give permission for, you know, trees, we really need the permission from the abutters first.
But if the trees are on private property, we have no authority to give permission to cut the trees.
The abutters would have to grant the authority and then say, if they wanna keep those trees, or have him take them away.
Right. So we, we can, in, once the permission's given by the abutters, we can say we support the cutting, and it's documented.
I don't think that that's one place that we wanna go, because you're opening up a can of worms with all the Class 6 roads, and whenever people have an argument between, among themselves on a Class 6 road, they're gonna come to the board of selectmen, and then if we say we're not gonna get involved in it, well, you got involved in it on another road.
Yeah.
I think it's up to him to find out who the trees are, and if he cuts the trees, they belong to somebody else, and somebody else is upset about it, it's them to get, to go after the person who cut the trees. It's got nothing to do with us.
That's where I'm at.
Yeah, it stays right in the letter here from Carl, it, I mean, the trees, by, from what he saw, clearly did not belong to the town, they probably belonged to the people next to the, next to the land. I think the only thing we have to address here is the drainage. The trees, I don't think we should get involved with. If, if anything, be it just the drainage, so that the drainage is done properly, we don't create any other issues, trees we stay away from.
Actually, all of the other issues as well.
Yes.
You know, where they place the gravel.
Yeah.
If he's cutting and fill, cutting the high side, filling the low side, building stone walls and stuff, I mean, you know, he's gotta work out all those details.
But if he's building stone walls on somebody else's property, we have nothing to do.
That's right.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying. But he's gotta address all of those issues with his, with the underlying, with the underlying property owners.
Exactly.
Right.
Yeah.
I agree, okay.
But the fill-
I like the input.
-on the, on the road.
It's not supposed to be there, according to Carl, and it creates a liability which we are tacitly approving, which could put us, which could create a liability for the town.
It's the, the liability is that if the road surface is raised, and if that raising of the road surface creates a dam-
Right.
-that backs the water up onto the abutter's property.
And we become liable.
And if he's bringing in fill, that creates an infestation of invasive species like Japanese knotweed on somebody else's property, they might be a little concerned with that.
I think you've had enough discussion here in the last five minutes to generate a letter back to the requister.
The question, and I'm, where I'm a little bit confused is, I mean, I think we're, we have consensus on the trees, and that it's a private dispute between him and his abutters. The issue is, he has altered the road, installed a four-inch culvert, which, according to our DPW director, is, has the potential to create a liability for the town. So the town has the prerogative to say one of two things, either you put it back to the way it was, or you can work with us and we'll help or assist you in coming up with some sort of other design which would not impede the flow of water and create a liability for the town. That's, so it's the only two things. So this board has to decide, in my opinion, we can, one, we cannot do nothing.
I would, I would agree with that, and Sue can state that in a letter. In my, my personal conversation with the requister, he's willing to yank up the four-inch pipe.
Yeah, so his options are gonna be either to remove the four-inch pipe-
If that was laid out as an option, that's probably what he would do.
And clearly stated in the letter as well that the road be returned to its original grade.
Well, that would do, I, at this point, that would do more damage.
Yeah, and you know, Judge Convoy ruled on the one, remember, where we put the gate at the base of the mountain?
Right.
She ruled on that one, and she told us to take down the gate, which we did, but she also gave strict instructions to the, that's a Class 6 road that it was on, and it was put there for good reason, because of the ATVs were causing erosion of that road. And she told the abutters that they could maintain the road, but not do any such improvements like changing the surface, like paving it, they couldn't change- like changing the surface, like paving it, they couldn't change the width, they could only maintain it in its original condition, basically.
And placing gravel without proper drainage in and of itself could alter drainage patterns.
Sure.
Because you may have had a low point in the road where the water's able to flow across, now they build it up, now you've got impoundments on, on the upstream side, it's, I mean, it seems like a pretty simple thing when you first look at it, but when you really get into it, there's, there's some complications to it.
With the board, all that we've just stated that could go back to the Requester, we still have the last issue is our approval that the existing gravel put on the road is, is after the fact approved, but no more in the future.
I'll go along with that, I'll buy that.
And what do we address, and then with the four-inch pipe?
That comes out.
Well, the recommendation or the suggestion was, there's two options, yank it up...
No, I just wasn't clear on what you said, that's all.
His choice, yank it up, or, or work with our Public Works to make it a proper, if drainage really needs to be installed, or, then work with all the proper permitting to make it happen.
Yeah.
Okay. You okay with that, Scott?
Because if it's done permissively, with a permit, I mean...
And with the abutters, the abutters that own the land up to the center line.
Exactly, yeah, they'll all have to sign off on it.
And it's not for us to get them to agree.
Correct.
They don't want to do a retroactive approval.
No, no, that creates liability for us.
Right.
If he's going to do anything to the road, he ought to present what his ultimate plan for the road is, drainage, gravel, walls, cutting and filling. Bring that plan forward, so we can bring it to the DPW director and say, "What do you think? Is this adequate, or would we require more?" And then, once you're done with that, you need to bring it to the abutters and say...
Are you okay with this?
Yeah, are you okay with this? I mean, there's some steps he's going to have to go through here.
I think we're done.
Should that letter be signed?
By the board.
By the board.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll all sign it.
Requesting to the board, yes.
Second item under Ode Business this evening is plowing of parking lots and driveways associated with several churches in town, and we extended that to the Villa as well, And we have correspondence from the pastors, rectors of the, of those organizations in our package this evening, documenting in our request what they felt were responsibilities that they were doing that ultimately would be of benefit to the town, because it would be a town function in the first place, but they're performing that. And therefore, it's a quid pro quo that could be documented in an agreement, where certain actions are done benefiting the town, and the town in return would provide plowing services. So, that will lead off our discussion, Selectman grows.
You know, I read through this, you know, these Christine Fillmore, Kimberly Halquist legal opinions, and I think we have to first, there's a couple, there's one thing I think we have to do first, and that is to define what we are looking for. Because I think there's been some confusion as to, is there a public good, which if you read all of these letters, in my opinion, there are public goods on every single one of them, no doubt about it. But when you read through the legal opinions, it talks about, "The governing body should only provide the service if they determine it is subordinate and incidental to the needs of the municipality's own highways." So, it's not, so it has to be subordinate and incidental to the needs of the municipality's own highways, not the municipality. So, it's kind of, it's pretty specific, and, and that, we're not even going to go into the fact that we can't use public funds for, for private purposes, but is it, again, subordinate and incidental? So, when I looked at these, there were many that did talk about, well, we do this for this nonprofit, or Goffstown Main Street, or other things, and I just don't know, I think if we, we have to once say, is it subordinate and incidental to the municipality's highway needs?
Those are important words, Scott, in your reading, those are part of, what paragraph?
Well, these are all over the, I mean, this is, throughout the legal opinions, it's like copying, I just copied them all onto, you know, several pages, but, you know, that was from Christine Fillmore's opinion or article in the November, December, 2009. And there was also another legal brief from LGC, so, and that was from February 2010.
Local Government Center, Monthly Public...
Local Government Center, yeah, so, so, I, I think that's, to me, that's the issue, is that when we, when you go through it, and I did, I was, there was a few that I was, that I could find, but I was hard pressed to find the vast majority of them, that would meet that, what I would consider the test that we have to, and that's just my opinion, and I think that's what we have to consent on, is what is the test here? Is the test public good, or is the test incident, you know, subordinate and incidental to the, you know, municipality's highway needs? That's the, that's, that's the big question.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Okay. When you get into the question of subordinate to the Goffstown highway needs, do you start getting into all other parking lots that are subordinate to our, roads, arterial roads, main roads? I mean...
What they, the opinions that were in here talked about, the, the cases are where you might go into a parking lot because there was no way to safely turn, turn the plow truck around, so therefore, that might be subordinate and incidental to, you know...
But are you including all parking lots? I mean, when you said...
Potentially, yeah.
Would you include school parking lots then?
Yes.
So, even the, even our public school parking lots would come under that?
I mean, I feel, I don't know what, you know, how you're trying to, I think the issue here is that public funds are going to public schools, so, you know, but it says here municipality, that's, that's what it says here, and the municipality is technically not the school district. Although there's a, there's a huge distinction between, I think, you know, whether it be a church, or a, or a parochial school versus a public school. In terms of public funds go towards those things, public funds don't go towards those other entities. And the Constitution doesn't allow us to do that, it's very specific.
Yeah, when we had the meeting with Attorney Drescher, I mean, he didn't get into that fine level of detail, he, at least what I heard was, as long as we can demonstrate there's a dollar for dollar, and, you know, I understand you're reading some words from some other decis, court decisions...
Yeah.
But that wasn't the guidance I heard coming from Drescher, it was, you can show a dollar for dollar, quid pro quo, then, then you, you're on pretty solid legal ground for, for plowing those areas, whether they're parking lots or driveways.
You know, the challenge, I think, with that is when you look at, I mean, I'm just trying to apply some common sense. If that were the case, and, and all you had to do was to prove a public good or a public benefit that the town receives, then the arguments that were made back then, well, if the Goffstown Christian Harvest Church operates a food bank, then why aren't we taking care of their needs? And if the Jehovah's Witness Hall and Daniel Plummer does X, Y, and Z, why wouldn't we be doing theirs as well? Because if we can demonstrate a quid pro quo, they should come to us and say, "Hey, can you please plow our, plow our, our, our parking lots?" The other thing that I think we need to also have a consensus about is the issue of garbage and recycling, I mean, this is pretty clear to me that the garbage and recycling is totally not incidental and subordinate, and it, it, the issue is strictly plowing, I mean, we should not be picking up trash and recycling in these facilities, there is no, there's no basis in the law that allows us to do it. I challenge us to find it where it is. That's just my, you know, I mean...
Can I, can I just, just a question, and I'm not bringing this up, I'm, I'm just bringing this up as something else to throw into this discussion. Okay, we pick up recyclables on private properties.
Yes.
What is the difference between picking up the recyclables on private property, picking up the recyclables?
We shouldn't be, I mean, according to this, we probably shouldn't be doing that either.
Okay, but the, us picking up the recyclables, the way we've done it on private property, okay, has all been run through the attorneys prior to doing it. So, I guess I have a little...
Well, I've never seen that, so, you have.
Well, I've been, I have.
I respect that.
I have, because we've been through that.
Right.
Okay, and the city of Manchester's been through that, you know, it, it goes back quite a ways. So, I guess the little bit of difficulty that I have is to say, just because it's a religious organization, that we can't treat you the way we treat a non-government entity on that side of town, and we pick up their recyclables, but we can't pick yours up because you're a religious organization. That I have a little bit of difficulty, because to me, that's, I have a difficulty with that.
The New Hampshire Constitution doesn't allow you to do it.
Well, then we should, why is it that we're allowed to pick up recyclables on the other property?
I can't, I mean, I did, I took a look at it, and Article 6, I'll read it to you, it's, it's from nineteen, 1784, it was amended in 1968. "As morality and piety rightly grounded on high principles will give the best and greatest security to government, and will lay in the hearts of men the strongest obligations to do subjection, and as the knowledge of these is most likely to be propagated through a society, therefore, the several parishes, bodies, corporate, or religious societies shall at times have the right of electing their own teachers, and of contracting with them for the support of, or maintenance, or both. But no, here's the thing, but no person shall ever be compelled to pay towards the support of the schools of any sect or denomination, and every person, denomination or sect, shall be equally under the protection of the law, and no subordination of any sect, denomination, or persuasion to another shall ever be established." So, you read through that, and, you know, but no person shall ever be compelled to pay towards the support of the schools of any sect. So, I think that is probably the difference between, and I'm not an attorney, but to me, the Constitution says that you can't. And that's just my interpretation of it. But this one, I think, extends not just what we're talking about, and these, these legal opinions has nothing to do with the church argument, I think it has to do more so with, you know, can you spend public monies on private property regardless of whether they're a church or not a church, and regardless of how much good they do? Because what's evident when you read through all these letters is that these churches are, in terms of public good, it's probably half a million dollars a year.
So, I guess what I'm asking, though, is, is what you, and maybe, maybe I'm not interpreting what you're saying, this, the way you're trying to say it, but that, the fact that they provide a service, a monetary service to the town, has absolutely nothing to do with it? Is that what you're saying?
No, what I'm, well, first of all, I mean, I like to state my position, is that my heart wants to do one thing, but my mind, my brain has to do another, because, you know, this issue was brought before us. And I just want to be crystal clear here, is that, and I think, Mr. Chairman, you got a similar phone call that pretty much said that if, if we did not rule the way the Constitution is written and the way the state laws are, that you can expect a lawsuit. So, that changes my, you know, I have to look strictly at what I think the law is and what my interpretation is. So, if we do get sued by an individual, that we're going to be able to make the right decision, so that it's not going to get overturned at, at a huge cost. So, I just don't, I don't see how, there are some things in some of these I think we can do, but the vast majority of them, I don't think that it meets, it meets that incidental and subordinate. And then, from there, is there a quid pro quo? So, you know, like, for an example, there was one at St. Lawrence Church, which came up, was that for a safety reason, I think students are there, you know...
Assembling for bus routes.
Right.
Of course, a plowing East Union Street, they'd swing in and...
Right, okay. So, I think you can make an argument, you know, for something like that, I think you can make an argument...
The church, the church was clear, if the, if, early in the morning, if the parking lot had not been plowed, they would not, for liability reasons, they would not want the parents driving in there and dropping off their children...
Correct.
Waiting for a bus.
Right. But I'm saying, that, then the other one was, you know, the Villa, I mean, you're bringing school buses in on that turn, I mean, to me, that's a, that, that one would be incidental and subordinate.
To the, to the road network.
That's just, yeah, I mean, and simply because you have the, the public school buses that are, are going on there, but some of these other ones, I just didn't see it.
Part of the bus route, we would not want the bus to get stuck in that route.
Right, but there are others that are clearly, like the parking lot there, that to me would be, there is no, I, I just don't know of any, I mean, the, the benefit is not to the town, it's to a, an organization that is not the town. And I, and I couldn't see anywhere where we would pick up trash or recycling, that I just couldn't.
Let's, let's divide this into the three pieces of the pie, we have plowing, we have trash pickup and recyclables, they all have their pros and cons and arguments, can we, do we want to make decisions here on each piece of the pie?
I think it might be the best way to handle it.
All right, you want me to start, I mean, I'll start off, you know, at least we can break it up into motions.
Mm-hmm.
I'm going to make a motion that we no longer provide garbage and recycling pickup at any of these facilities, as the law, there's nowhere in the law that I see where it is incidental and subordinate to the maintenance of the highways, and I just don't, I don't think, I don't think we're statutorily enabled to do it.
I have a counterargument to that, is there a second? My counterargument is that you took two pieces of the pie on that one.
Okay.
Trash and recyclables, and I wanted three. We presently, as he was discussing, we presently pick up recyclables at many, look...
Honda.
Many property locations that otherwise would not be eligible, because we earn money from the recyclables. And so, they're put out at the street, or we have, I believe, do we have permission to enter the property?
The other ones we don't.
Yeah, we have permission to enter the property, to get to the, the regular recyclable tote, if it's not out on the property line, so...
So, your, your argument is that there is, because there's a financial interest...
You're talking, you're talking, now you're not talking about five or six religious institutions, you're talking about several hundred condominiums.
I just don't know where, I mean, I, I'll be more than happy to revise or put pen that, you know, hearing, as I was not privy to what you got, I just don't know where...
Oh, timber wood?
So, do we have a legal opinion that allows us to do that?
We are, it was all done with the attorneys.
I, that was before my time, all I know is that we went, when we went to curbside recycling, prior to that, we had waste management doing the recycling, and waste management was picking up everyone in town. And I remember a discussion, I wasn't in the position at the time, but I remember the discussion that we couldn't not, we had to continue that practice, because otherwise we would have seen a big increase in trash. So, they had to continue picking up all the recycling that they had contracted out with waste management.
But wouldn't they, we don't pick up their garbage, so wouldn't they be paying more for their...
They could bring it to the transfer station.
They could bring it to the transfer station.
Yeah.
Okay. Either commercially have someone pick it up, or take it to the transfer station and pay a dumping fee.
Okay.
Scott, was that decision specific to snow plowing?
Yeah.
That, that souvenir being from?
Yes.
So, could one expand on that and say, if it's incidental to municipal services that are being provided, so if we're providing a municipal service of collecting trash, and it's incidental to pick up these trash, because it's right on the route, and it's right where they're going, it's incidental... is it incidental and subordinate to the?
The, the plowing was specific, used the word incidental subordinate, because it addressed a, a case, Clapp versus Jaffrey, where it actually talked about the facts, and, and it was specifically to snow plowing, private roads, class six roads, et cetera, so.
Yeah, those opinions were only on plowing.
Right, they were only on plowing. However, you know, the, the major thrust of, of it is that the law does not allow us to spend public funds on private. So, I think that's the one that I'm confused as to how we're doing it, if the law doesn't allow us to. Where if there is, and if there's a way around it, that's great, I just, I just didn't know. I don't, I'm privy to that.
I, I, I kind of feel that, that the plowing is one issue, and the trash and recyclables are a different issue, because you have different, different things that go in, into it, and different court cases that are specific to trash and recyclables versus plowing. So, some of those things that are cited as plowing cases, you have other ones that are recycling and trash pickup cases, and they, I, I, they, they, how they interrelate, I couldn't. Slap and gross, would you like?
Well, my motion has passed.
We never had a second. Did you, would you like to address your motion to the steeple plowing of the circular driveway?
At the villa?
At the villa.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't, if I wanted to do it in really little bits and pieces, yeah, that we would provide plowing services to the circular driveway of the villa, as it, as it is incidental and subordinate to the maintenance of the, of the bus routes and the.
Bus route and the road.
Is that where they let off?
Yeah.
At their front door. What else do we plow at the villa?
Plow the whole parking lot.
Well, they have large, they have a considerable number of parking spaces behind the building, as well as that very large lot.
On Norman Road.
Baseball field. Well, there is some history to the one on Norman Road, and I don't know if Mark might remember. It goes quite a ways back, there used to be a big hump, when you went up Norman Road, there used to be a big hump.
Oh, yeah, I remember, yeah.
That was there, and when, uh, I don't recall exactly what the arrangement was, but there was an arrangement, in my understanding and my recollection is that the villa paid to have the hump taken out of the road for the town, when they redid that parking lot over there. And I think that might have something to do with why there was, might be some additional services. But I'm just saying that the award, that, that when you go back into some of the history, you do have things that were done. And I don't have, how that. I view that as, there may have been some public benefit, but how long does that benefit amortize over? You know, it's not forever. I second the motion concerning the plowing of the circular driveway at Villa Augustine, as it being incidental, subordinate to the bus route, road network. Any discussion? Safe routes to school, okay. I call for the vote, those in favor of the motion indicate. Saying aye.
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 Opposed. Opposed.
Those opposed? One, four, one.
I'll make a motion to approve plowing of the, and I, I don't know how to describe it, at, and I'm speaking now to Saint Lawrence.
A swath or something?
Yeah. A drop-off area.
Right.
For students. It's in the Saint Lawrence Church, subordinate and incidental to the plow route on East Union Street, and provides for safety of our students.
Can I ask you a question? When you say for plowing of a swatch, what do you mean?
So that they can safely drop off.
And that's all that they plow?
Yeah, they wouldn't, there was, there's no need to do more than.
Plowing the doors, parking lots, or the back parking lots?
The only thing I have to say about that is, if I was that, and, and again, I'm going to say, I am a member of Saint Lawrence, okay? But the, reading the information that was presented to us, the concern that I have about that is, where it goes back into some of the discussions that we had with attorney, it was brought up earlier, if they do provide things to us at no charge, and if we have that monetary amount balancing out with the other monetary amount, and that's where I was going also with the villa, that it seems that you can do it, because if it's incidental enough to swing in there and do that, you could do a little bit more. And the concern that I have, that if I was responsible for Saint, I mean, for Saint Lawrence, that I would have a concern of allowing parents and students coming into a parking lot that only has a swatch paved, for students to wait for the bus, because if somebody got hurt, and we didn't, weren't able to get out there and plow the parking lot, as indicated in that letter that we got from them, then that we would be liable. So, why would I allow students and parents to assemble in my parking lot that's not properly paved?
Yeah, the parents are parking there. Sounds like the parents are parking there and watching to make sure the kids.
They pull in there. Kids in the car, running warm, so the kids are warm, out of the weather.
Yeah.
And then, when everybody's on the bus, then the parents leave.
And then you also, as was in the letter, you have the use of the parking lot by the town throughout the year for, for events.
Yes, exactly.
Well, then we're getting away from the subordinate incidental argument.
Yeah.
Because if that's where we're going, I can make that argument for any, any of the houses.
Do we have a, a incidental need of shoulder of parking that normally would be done on a road? And if we're limited on shoulder parking, then having that incidental benefit in a lot?
I think the shoulder parking in the wintertime, when the snow is there, narrows the road down enough that it now becomes a safety issue for the buses and the people on the two-way traffic. If that's where I'm, if, that's where I think you're going, Mr. Chair.
If, if those persons wishing to congregate and drop their children off at a convenient point, if they were shoulder parking, and they're obstructing traffic at that point, because there is no shoulder.
I guess I'm a little uncomfortable making this, this is kind of a paradigm shift here. I mean, we originally approached this, and we had told each of these groups of people that, show us dollars and cents, the benefit that you provide to the community. And we'll, we'll consider that as a quid pro quo. And that's what Attorney Drescher told us.
Right.
If they can show us dollar for dollar, it's happening, that doesn't get to the, down to that fine level of incidental and subordinate to maintaining our roads. He never, he never mentioned that to us, and we never shared that information with these folks. So, so we're kind of making a shift now.
Well, we did talk about specifically, what are you doing for the town of Goffstown? Many of these did.
You have a moment?
We have, we have a list from Saint Lawrence, right here.
Mark.
It's several thousand dollars. We listened to what the attorney had to say, we had a special meeting with the attorney. We all, in every one of the discussions we've had here, in the past, previous discussions we've had, we've always come back to that quid pro quo, that, I mean, we always, we always find some reason, we always find something. The issue that we're dealing with here is plowing, correct? We're just, we're just dealing with the plowing issue right now?
Yes.
Okay. I want to make a motion, if that's our.
We, we already have a motion on the bill.
Okay, all right, okay.
And it's been, and it's been seconded, right?
I'm asking for a second, no second.
Okay.
Any new motions?
Ah, the motion I would like to make is that the congressional church, bear with me a minute here, Hillside Church, the villa, and Saint Lawrence Church, and whoever I may have left out incidentally, which I didn't mean to leave out, all have plowing restored to the, to the way it used to be. We've, we've proven the point of the quid pro quo, I believe, and I think we're sitting here just spinning it around for nothing, and I want to make that motion, that we restore it to the way it was, period.
I have a motion. Includes restoring what services we have been provided.
Correct.
I'm, I'm going to second the motion for discussion.
Plowing services only, though, right?
Plowing services only, yes.
Would you provide some discussion since you sponsored this motion?
We, yes, we have, we have done it.
I want you to emphasize, please, the, the technical words of incidental and subordinate.
We, we have done this for years, whether it's right or wrong. We've listened to the attorney, and the attorney has proven his, I think it's proven his point to me, that, that I believe I understand. There, there is a valid reason, there is a, there is a valid need, a warrant, and I'll go to the villa. If we plowed just the front of the villa, what happens if somebody's going to drive a bus to the back of the villa? What happens, I mean, there's, there's, there's too many, to me, just, there's, there's too many unknowns, and, and for the safety of everybody involved, whether it be filling the parking lot at, at, at Saint Lawrence for, for parents waiting for the, for the buses to get there with the kids, to keep the kids in a warm place, or the villa, or wherever it may be, I mean, I think there's enough justification, and that's why I made the motion.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I want to go back, and, and I agree, I think we need to look at them individually, but I want to go back to Attorney Drescher's guidance to us. I mean, he's our lawyer, we pay him to give us legal advice, and he gave us legal advice. And Carl has given us an estimate of what it would cost to plow each of these facilities. So, I think we need to see specific dollars from each of these facilities, they're at least equal to the, the estimate that Carl's given us. I don't need to see eighty or a hundred or two-hundred thousand dollars, and Carl says, the tax, and I'm just throwing numbers out there, fifteen hundred dollars to plow out this facility, and they can show us fifteen hundred dollars of hard numbered dollars benefit that we get, then, then that's quid pro quo. And I'm perfectly comfortable going forward with that, because that was our guidance from our legal counsel.
Slap and device.
I think Scott had us the hand up before me.
I'm sorry. You know, I think one of the things that was, that was telling was, I guess, the honesty and the candor of Reverend Exner's letter to us, and it was the, for the record, I think it was, it was his comments, I think, that were made when he was here. And he, and he said, in our packet, it was page number two, so everybody's following along.
Yeah, I'm trying to, just hang on a minute. Page number two, is it?
Yeah.
This one here?
No, it's the one before.
Oh, okay, yeah, 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 all right, the, the.
So, he just said here, "I'm aware that according to C. Christine Fillmore's February brief, municipalities have no legal authority, except under narrow circumstances, to private, to plow private property. I polled forty-eight Episcopal churches in forty-seven other New Hampshire towns, and only two received plowing." He further goes on to say, is, "I don't want to take them out of context. I think it's great that Goffstown has traditionally set a better example in this. Bottom line, our town, our community gets far more bang for the buck than the churches in this relationship of mutual support. It sets a good example, and that's the way that it should be." So, I didn't want to take them out of context. But when forty-seven other Episcopal churches do not have their driveways plowed, I find it really hard to believe that forty-eight, you know, that, 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 that those forty-eight are, are doing something wrong, or that they, they could, they could find a way to do it. And I think what we're doing here, and again, my heart says, I'd love to find a way to do it, but we are. We are, we are doing what was done twenty and thirty years ago. There really is no basis in the law to do it, but we're trying to find a way. And I, I think that, that to me is, I, I just don't, I don't think that it's legal. And my heart wants to do it, but, but I just don't think it's, it's, it's legal. And my job is to uphold the, the constitution of, of New Hampshire and our, and our ordinances, and I just, in my, in my mind, I don't think I'm upholding the New Hampshire constitution, where it says, you know, I just, what I just read. And I don't think, when you talk about subordinate and incidental, if we want to hang our hat on this quid pro quo argument, then maybe we want to have Drescher revisit the incidental and subordinate thing. But I think we're going down a dangerous slope. If we get, unless we want to just roll the dice and see if this gentleman, if Richard Mene is going to sue us, you know, we can certainly go down that, that road. But when forty-seven out of forty-eight don't do it, to me, that's an indication that it's, they're following the law. Yes, Phil.
I, I understand perfectly well what you're saying. And I understand the oath that we've taken about following the constitution. There are also case laws that come up that use the constitution. Some of these case laws were brought up, and when we had the discussion with our attorney, it was brought up, we, we, we talked about use of a parking lot for municipal purposes. I mean, one of the things is that we are sometimes short. I mean, we don't have the greatest municipal parking areas, a lot of them are full, we could always use more. Saint Lawrence is towards the center of town, it's considered to be in the village. The parking lot is right on East Union Street. It, it is allowed to be used by the town, as has been pointed out in, in here. I, I see that as one of the things that we specifically discussed with, with the attorney, as far as use of a parking lot. If Goffstown had plenty of municipal parking space, and we were, we were, we had excess capacity of municipal parking space, I think it would be, it would be tough to make the justification that use of municipal parking spaces, if we didn't need it. But I think, my understanding and the discussion that we had with him is that that is one thing that is a benefit to the town, is the municipal parking.
And if I bought, if I buy into that argument, which is, you know, I think you could argue it, that does not support the reason for doing, say, the villa parking lot. There is no benefit for municipal parking on that property, at all. The benefit of that parking lot being plowed is the sole benefit of Goffstown Junior Baseball to use the fields. Period, the end, okay? However, the, you know, what you are doing is, we are picking and choosing our organizations that we favor, because the Lions Club used to have their grass cut by the Parks and Rec, and it was, because they could do it. Now, all of a sudden, we didn't have the resources. So, you know what, it's private property, we can't do it anymore. I could call up the Odd Fellows Lodge, who, by the way, gives the CERT team opportunities to have their meals there, et cetera. They should come into the town and say, "I don't want to pay for plowing anymore, or trash pickup. I want the town to provide the services." And we should be able to say to them, "Yes, Odd Fellows Lodge, you deserve it." Because we, you know, the CERT team uses it, you, you do so much for the community, you give back tens of thousands of dollars, and the same thing with the Lions Club, you do the same thing, and the Masons, and the list goes on and on and on. Because we would be hypocrites if we said, you know what, we like the villa, and we like junior baseball better than we like the Odd Fellows Lodge, and the Masons, and the Lions Club. Because we are, we are now picking and choosing which religious organization, or which private, you know, club is going to get preferential treatment. We are picking the winners and the losers, that is not constitutional, and that's just simply wrong. And that's what we're doing.
I, I have, one thing I just want to bring out, is when we had the discussion with the attorney, the attorney specifically said that if you plow a church's parking lot, and that parking lot, if you need municipal parking, and, and you park that, that that was.
But that's a valid, I'm saying, that I can see as a valid argument, but that doesn't support a lot of these others.
I, I agree, I agree with both of you, I agree there's a lot of stuff in here that I can't buy. I mean, this whole thing about, you know, some of these organizations that they provide space to, I mean, they could, they could hold their meetings in other places. But some of them in here, like, well, Saint Lawrence can provide a specific number of meetings for a specific number of Goffstown municipal organizations.
And I have that, I've circled that, it, it was eight-hundred and fifty dollars or something.
And they've got a fee schedule.
Right, no, and I.
Here's what we were charged, but we don't, so it's easy to add those up. And say it offsets the seventeen-hundred, or whatever it costs to plow every year. Yeah, I'm on, I'm totally on board with that, and I think that's the way we need to approach this. But some of the others aren't able to do that.
I'm just saying, I, I clicked off yes, yes, yes to, to those. So I mean
You know, and I also want to point out that, you know, Richard Meany, when he started, that's what started this whole thing. And I spoke with Richard Thursday about this. I mean, his letter is in here, it's on tab ten C. I mean, his accounting is absolutely bogus. I mean, it doesn't work. He's basically taking how much it costs for our schools, dividing it by the number of students, and says it costs ninety-five, ninety-seven hundred. So we send a hundred kids to Villa, that's a million dollars. Well, that's total garbage. That doesn't add up. That's not good accounting. It doesn't work. You know, and if you want to take that one step further, all right, so everybody who owns schools, their children
Should get it, right.
Should go plow their driveways. You know, I mean, so that
But that's where I have my
This whole argument doesn't work for me. But I still think we need to get back to what our town council told us. Stick to the numbers. Stick to the dollars and cents. And if you can show that you can offset the numbers that Carl's already given us, so we've got one good set of numbers. Here's what it costs to plow. Show us the numbers, and St. Lawrence can do that. And others can do that in here as well.
Then maybe we should do it, I mean, I did have three or four things for St. Lawrence Church that I thought met the quid pro quo, and
We have a motion and a second on our table. Could I make a suggestion?
Yes.
If the motioner and the seconder agree, would they be amenable to taking these up one at a time and going through?
Each one?
Yes.
Each, each
Each, each facility.
Yes. I would be, absolutely.
Nope, sorry.
All right.
Who seconded that?
Call us for discussion.
Let's vote and do it over again if we have to.
Okay. Call for the vote on the motion. You addressed all these facilities we've been naming this evening to do plowing. With their immediate structure, the parking, parking lots and driveways.
Correct.
Call for the vote. Those who favor the motion indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Aye. One, four, zero. Do you want to address
Do you have Carl's numbers?
I do.
I'm sorry. Well, let's just
I don't, well, he's got them all lumped together, the cost of, I'd have to
Oh, plowing and recycling.
While we're waiting, I started off with the Congregational Church. That was the first one in our packet. And I put on my sheet here that there appeared to me to be about a two to three hundred dollar a year benefit to the town. And whether or not there, it costs two to three hundred dollars to plow, then, but that's what I had, is in terms of what I felt was a quid pro quo for what I would deem incidental, subordinate to
Well, let, let, if I may, let's look at the numbers. They gave us four specific items. Did you say you don't agree with some of those four?
Well, I, yeah, and I'll tell you, because I thought that two of them, in my opinion, were one-time events.
They've come and gone.
They've come and gone. And I, and I thought, you know, some of them are, are things that, and I said two to three hundred, I was, I added up the last two, and, and figured, and then threw in another, you know, maybe there's another thing that might do, and that's how I came up with my two to three hundred dollar range. So, I don't know what
Which one were you doing?
Congregational Church. I had a two to three hundred dollar benefit myself, but
Congo Church does not have much parking lot.
No.
At all.
They've got that, they've got that, they've got that drive that goes
But we weren't plowing them anyway. We're not.
Well, they're all on-street parking or parking in municipal law.
We don't plow them.
They've got that one area behind the church that
So maybe that's a mood issue.
I, I may agree with several of the costs for the events. Those costs don't equate to quid pro quo over the course of a whole winter. My, my view on that.
For the Congo Church?
Yes.
We don't, we don't plow Congregational Church.
So it's a moot
Besides, we don't do it. They do, they documented it, and they don't do it anymore.
I think they documented it for the trash and recycling pickup. Which we do do.
We have
So was the next one was
Next one in our packet?
Hillside, right?
Hillside Methodist Church.
I even want, I'd give some credence to, yeah.
I just didn't know what it was.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure either.
Yeah.
Do we plow to get into that cemetery?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we do, because the, all the way through, the crypt is there. And that's town property on that side of the road, too. So the incidental, when you say the incidental part, the town property on the parking for Grasmere is across Center Street, in front of the, the gate of the fence for the cemetery, that area. And into the right is their, is their driveway. We, we, we cross their property to get
That gives us the subordinate and incidental.
Yeah.
No, no, that gives us that part. But I, I think then what is the, what is then the exchange?
We're talking about that whole gravel strip along the fence.
Yeah.
From the church all the way down
Well, no, 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 that's town, that, that's, that's town parking.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
I, I have a, a printout from the town's GIS showing parcel boundaries. And the town's right-of-way essentially comes very close to the front steps, physically going into the building.
So it's town property we're plowing.
So what, what you see just shy of the steps going into the building
Is our property, anyway.
It's town property.
So that one, that one's moot.
That's moot.
Plus, we, we go in the back for the, for the crypt.
Yeah.
And this is probably a better way of doing it, because let the record show, at least we went through each one, and then if it comes up again, that
Yeah, he had no cost for Hillside Methodist for plowing.
Next one in our packet, Villa Augustine School. And we've already addressed the plowing of their circular driveway.
So that's all we're going to, we're going to limit it to the driveway only.
Well, I guess, what about the offsets?
The what?
The offsets.
I just, I don't, in the second paragraph, the offset of the educational thing, I, I just can't Well That's the second paragraph, may not be totally accurate. And, and then there's the other assumption, well, if there's sixty-one, or now there's fifty-four Goffstown kids, well, who's to say that those Goffstown kids wouldn't go to another parochial school, or, I, I mean, I don't know if I
You're getting back to Meany's?
Yeah.
No, I don't buy his logic on that.
I got through a rebuttal to that letter.
And for example, the, the third paragraph deals with their providing a facility hall to a, a troop. Well, there's no town requirement
Right.
For us to provide a, a function hall for the Girl Scouts.
Or the Legion, for that matter.
So the fact that they're doing it is good for the community, but there's no requirement for the town to do that. So it doesn't count. Same thing for the other organizations that they host.
But I think the training aspect, though, for the fire department is significant, because the cost of going, now, we have to go to Concord for that?
We have to go to Concord.
And then we have to get other departments to cover
Yeah.
Other towns to cover for us.
The cost of plowing the villa, all of the villa that we do now, is one thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars.
For a year?
Yes.
No way. Please.
Remember when Carl gave us the prices? They were next to nothing. We questioned, we questioned his, we questioned his prices when he brought them to us, and we said, I don't buy that. I'm sorry, but
Well, well
Well, remember, remember, he is not, I suspect he's not amortizing the cost of the vehicles.
I think he said he was. I specifically asked him.
Plow, yes, plow, plow and drive are hourly rate ninety-eight dollars and thirty-four cents.
He's got the trucks on the road, I mean, he's
And he's saying it takes an hour per snowstorm.
He's, he, he is the
For most of these.
It takes
For three out of four.
Right, so It's a situation, it may take fifteen minutes to finish some facility. So he's looking at the hourly rate, whereas if it was a commercial plow company, that owner of that company would be amortizing his vehicle and other functions of running a department as part of what he charges to a customer.
And profit.
And profit. That's right.
Yeah, and all Carl put is his plow rate and his driver hourly rate. So he's calculating of the four that he plows, three of them are ninety-eight dollars per storm, and one is a hundred and twenty-three dollars per storm.
You can't get a driveway done for, like, thirty-five dollars a storm. A driveway.
I'd be more than happy to plow your driveway. My fees are thirty dollars, and I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, I'm just saying, it's, that's, but my driveway is probably one one-hundredth the size of that parking lot.
One of the organizations that responded to us had a, a last paragraph saying, if you, selectmen, if you choose not to plow for free, we would like to know if you, we could reimburse you for that cost. I personally would not want to go down that road, because I don't believe in being competitive to commercial
But I don't think that's the issue. The issue is the accounting.
It's, it's the accounting, and, and, you know, we
Collections.
We, we don't make a profit, and therefore, we could potentially undercut everybody.
I mean, we need, but that's moot anyways, because that's our parking lot. That's our property we're plowing.
We're talking about five thousand dollars a year between these four places.
Which I, which I just want to be on the record, is I highly dispute that. I just want to be on the record for that. There is no way that plowing all of those parking lots is five thousand dollars a year. It's impossible.
Any potential motion on expanding the plowing at the Villa Augustine? Hearing none? Mark.
Plow the entire facility of Villa. That's my motion. The dollar figure, I mean, we heard it from Sue, we heard, I'm not going to disagree with our superintendent of highways. I mean
Yeah, nor am I.
I mean
I'll second that.
Plow the entire facility.
I just have a clarification. I assume this is a fee schedule they presented us. It's this one big page, time across the top, headcount down below. So I'm assuming that if you had a group of fifty, and you wanted to use the villa for one hour, it would cost you two-hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah.
That's their fee.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm just curious, as, you know, for the record, what, what is the basis for doing that?
He's physically, I mean, what was the price, Sue?
No, no, what is the basis that allows us to do that? What is the incidental or subordinate nature of that, that would allow us legally to plow that particular parking lot? What, what does the town itself gain?
Think of a document that our town attorney
Because our attorney, attorney's going to have to, he's going to have to
Put the hard words in.
Right, and he's going to have to say that it would cost the town of Goffstown X amount of dollars to do this, because the villa performs a service.
I'll specifically, I'll specifically use fire service training, because I'm familiar with fire service training. If we want to use the new section of the building for stand pipes, and we want to use the new, newer old section for, for ladder training, aerial training, ground ladder training, hose training, whatever, whatever it may cost, as Phil said before, for us to leave here, drive to Concord, get the facility in Concord, pay for the price of the facility in Concord, and I don't know what it is, pay for that facility, you use the fuel to drive there, you use the apparatus while you're there, you're paying the manpower while you're there, you're, I mean, you're, you're paying considerably more having to drive to Concord where you're at, you're at the villa. If you're allowed to do it at the villa, you can stretch hose lines up inside. You can do everything except put smoke in the building at the villa.
And I would argue that that would not be incidental and subordinate, and that you are creating a means to do it for them, because the reality of is, you're still paying your, your firefighters to, to do the training. Yes, you are saving the cost of gasoline, and yes, you are paying them probably an extra hour to get to Concord. But that would not, you know, it's like, it's such a stretch, you know, to do that. I, I, I'm just trying to protect us from what I think is going to be a legal challenge. I think we're going to lose on a lot of these things, so
And if you didn't have, if you didn't plow that parking lot, and baseball wasn't allowed to use it, would they be coming to the town to create fields for baseball?
Possible. But then again, I, I just
No, I understand, I understand.
Well, the villa listed some specific functions. I, I find one clearly, it's friends of the Goffstown Library. There's a function that they allowed. That one, I think, is a
That's what I had. Yep.
The other ones are
But I didn't understand that one, because they had that one, and so did a star call. And the pie contest, as far as I'm concerned
Past two years
Has always been at
Star
Star call. So I
So it may have been at one point in time, but not regularly.
I think this one is like one of the bigger stretches. That's just my opinion. I think it's one of the bigger stretches for trying to do a quid pro quo. I think you can make arguments for St. Lawrence. I think you can make arguments for some of the ones close here, as what Phil said with parking. But I, this one, I think, is a real stretch.
Where the conversation is now going is that we may have misled these organizations by asking them to document a wide range of benefits, whereas
I don't think we did.
We asked them to a town.
We asked for town, municipal.
Municipal benefit.
Municipal, so it's a wide range of benefits, and they've done that. And now we got a brand-new interpretation.
No, I disagree.
Valid, it's valid, dealing with a very narrow niche. It has to be incidental to the, a road.
No, but I'm disagreeing with you on this, because when, when they were here, we said, can you, can you give us where you've, where it benefits the town? Okay?
Not the community.
And some of them did that.
Yeah, we said not the community.
This one happened to list everything. But I just don't think it benefits the town. I mean, whether they're doing, I mean, they do a ton. A villa's done, I mean, and I'm not disparaging the villa, they're awesome. But none of these things are for the town. They're for private organizations.
Yeah, because we said in our letter, "While, since taxpayer monies are used to provide snowplowing and trash services, please list, quantify, and value the services provided by your organization to the town of Goffstown, which would offset these costs. While it is very generous of organizations to provide free meeting towns, meeting room space to nonprofit organizations, such as Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts, we would not consider that a public benefit. Municipalities are not required to provide meeting room space to nonprofits, and therefore, we are unable to count the provision of that service as an offset to a taxpayer expense." So we were very specific in what we were asking for.
Right, so if I can just say one thing that, you know, we, yeah, have to understand, is that we deal with the term "town" on a daily basis, many, many times during the day. And to us, "town" means
Town.
The town, section, portion, and not, nothing to do with the school district. The school district is separate.
Yeah.
The sewer commission is separate, the village water precinct, grasp. But the average person who doesn't deal with it the way we deal with it on a daily basis, when you say "town," it means anything to do with the town. So it's difficult for people who don't deal with it like we do on a daily basis to fundamentally think that way and separate those things out the way we do. So we just have to keep that in mind.
But we did discuss that, and we were clear about that. We're talking about the municipality, not the community. There's a big difference.
Right, I understand. I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just saying that it's, it's, other people haven't, yeah, it's, it's not that clear in their mind.
So when Director of Public Works offered a, a cost for the Villa Augustine, was that just the circular driveway, or all the parking behind the building?
That was all the
And, and the large
And Norman Road, yes.
Norman Road parking area. Well, you know, I'm torn on this one. I, I can, I feel we could easily document fourteen hundred dollars of benefit to the fire department, and the expense of running that operation for training.
And I, I'm, what I'd like to also do is, whatever the outcome of this one, you know, I'd like to make a motion to provide plowing services to the Odd Fellows Lodge, because CERT team is a certified response team that, as we all know, helps our community, whether it be the Mother's Day floods, et cetera. And they allow that group to, to train there, to hold functions there, et cetera. They do have a fee schedule. And based upon what I can see here, I, I believe that, you know, we, we really should take care of them, you know, as well, because they, they, they really do do a lot for the community. And it is incidental. They're going right by Mountain Road. I mean, there's no, there really isn't a big deal to do it.
Should they request that? But they haven't requested it.
Is there a motion for the villa yet?
No, no.
I was going to answer Scott's question. The last two CERT classes that I've partaken in have not been over there. They've been at the Gofftown High School. They, they've changed their location, all of the classes They've been at the Gofftown High School. They, they've changed their location. All of the classes are held at the Gofftown High School upstairs on the second floor. I did make the motion. I would, I guess we're still discussing it.
So your, your argument is the public good is the savings of dealing with the training of the fire department?
Training with the fire department and, and whatever, I mean, whatever else.
And the school bus drop-off was the other one.
School bus drop-off and the fact that we are graciously given the permission to play ball in the fields across the street. I mean-
It's not a town benefit, though.
Okay.
It's not. I just don't, I just don't think it's a, I, I think it is a community benefit, wholeheartedly. I just don't-
No, I understand.
And the other thing is, we don't even have a cost for this, for the fire truck. I mean, we're just going to go and we're going to make a decision here simply because we're, you know-
You have that book from the Chief O'Brien, Cost of Doing Business? I don't have it with me.
No, I trust you, Mark. I mean, I trust, I trust what you do, but I'm saying to myself, okay, the only difference between doing it in town versus not doing it in town is that we're going to have another probably hour and a half of time.
We'll have, we'll have at least another good two hours of training.
Okay, two hours.
With the fire truck, it's an hour ride up and it's an hour ride back.
Right.
And, and then whatever it'll take to get the truck back in service.
I'm perfectly comfortable with that.
And, and the other advantage is if we take all our trucks, bring our trucks all out of it, we'll say one or two or three of our trucks out of town and I'll use specifically the tower ladder. Let's say we're going to use a tower ladder. Now we've taken, we've taken a resource out of the town. With that resource is not in town. We'll say we do have a fire on Main Street. Let's say we have a fire someplace where that, where that piece is needed. Now do we call Ware's ladder truck in? Do we call Bedford's ladder truck in? Do we call Manchester's ladder truck in?
Is there a cost to the town when that happens?
Doesn't cost the town, but it still, it's, it's, for Ware, who knows? I mean, mutual aid, mutual aid is usually a zero price involved, but, I mean-
I see where it's going, but I, like I said, I, I think as long as we're consistent when groups like the Lions Club or the Oddfellows come and they want that, if you're prepared to say no to them, then I think we've got some problems. You know, if we're going to be consistent and we're going to allow some of these other groups who do good things in this community to come in and ask for, whether it be, you know, doing that stuff, then, then, then that's one thing, you know, but could we argue that maybe we should be cutting their grass too? I mean, should we do that?
Okay.
No, no, I'm, I'm being, I mean, we're still in debate, we're still in debate mode.
You're bringing up the point, Scott, at the fine point of incidental to the highway, incidental, subordinate to the highway.
To the highway, which I don't see how that parking lot is, is subordinate and incidental to the maintenance of the highway.
Any closing arguments?
No, sir.
Call for the vote on the Villa Agostina full, full plowing.
Yes, sir.
Was the motion, as was seconded. So, those in favor of that motion, indicate, say aye.
Aye.
I had three, Scott.
Number nay.
I call for the dissent, nay.
Nay.
Nay for me. So it was three in favor. Motion passes. Three, two. Next one is what?
St. Lawrence Church, correct.
Yes.
I had the last three of their things as benefit to the town.
I'd throw in all the Main Street meetings, too.
I didn't, I didn't do Main Street because they're, they're a nonprofit organization, although that they, we support them on our warrant and, but they're technically not the town, so that's why I didn't include them.
And that's why you didn't include Gofftown High School stuff?
Because they're not part of the town, yeah.
Okay.
And I thought it was pretty clear that it had to be the town, not the school district. That was just my interpretation of it.
Mr. Chair, on the fire department, I know in, last year we had two functions at the Villa, depending on, on retirements and-
St. Lawrence.
St. Lawrence.
St. Lawrence, yeah, on the retirements, for the retirement, who retires, people retire, the annual Christmas party. In, in all fairness, I would like to take that two-hundred-and-fifty and bring it up to seven-fifty. And if you want to check with Chief O'Brien on that, that's-
Now, what was those, what was those for?
We had, we had retirement parties.
A, an association of firemen.
Correct.
It's not a town-
Not a town function.
But they work for the town.
Yeah, but you could, I mean, if we had a-
We don't, we don't require-
We don't-
The fire department to have a-
And I don't even know what those, I mean, it looks like those are Christmas parties, but I'm just, I'm assuming that maybe they're town-sponsored or something, but-
What was the price, Sue, for the St. Lawrence?
St. Lawrence, one-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars.
One-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars?
Eighty-eight.
One-thousand-eighty-eight.
One-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-eight.
Oh, one-eighty-eight. Thank you very much.
All right, I will make the argument that what Phil said is that one thing that they don't have on here, which they didn't quantify, is parking. Well, the, the drop-off and, and, and the, the fact that we do have a lack of municipal parking, you know, in the town. I mean, there is no doubt about that. Now, could they charge? I guess they could, but they don't. But, I mean, that is, to me, that's a valid-
That's a valid argument and point.
Yeah, well, they, for, for the record, they did make it, but they didn't put it on this list with a, with a calculated value amount.
They presented the arguments in front of this board, though.
And it's also in, in this documentation.
I, I'm just saying, I want to be, you know, consistent in my opinion, and that is, I did not see a valid reason to plow a parking lot at the Villa because it was, it, it's not necessary for, you know, the town, et cetera. But there is definitely a lack of, because it's not a municipal parking lot situation. Whereas I think this one, you could argue that it does have a bona fide legitimate park, overflow parking or parking lot.
Are you making a motion?
When the town was, had experienced-
This was the only one on-
Five, five years ago.
This was the only one that I didn't have a problem with.
My wife had no choice but to leave the car in St. Lawrence overnight.
I made one motion. Let somebody else make another motion.
I'll make a motion on this one. This one I had no problem with.
And I'll second it.
And would you make that motion more, more descriptive, please?
Sure. This one, I will make a motion that we plow St. Lawrence parking lot as, for the, for the following reasons. One, there is a clear demonstration of the fact that they provide the town with facility use, use of their parking lot for municipal purposes due to the fact that there is a lack of parking in the village. And lastly, for the, for the safe, safety of students due to the fact of, of Union Street, the way that it's configured, et cetera. So to me, those three things was a no-brainer for me. This was the only one that I had.
And you still second the full motion description?
Yes, I do, sir.
Any further discussion? Call for the vote. Those in favor indicate, say aye.
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 I'm going to abstain since I'm a parishioner of St. Lawrence.
So, thank you for-
I don't think that my, my vote would have been a swing vote anyway, but I'll just abstain just to, just for the record.
Point zero one.
I have that. I have it.
Next item is the Goffstown Christian Fellowship, Henry Bridge Road.
Value of plowing is one-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars.
How much?
One-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars.
Same cost.
No, that one was almost eighteen-hundred.
St. Lawrence was one-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-eight.
Really? Same thing?
Yep.
So the office space for the police chaplain?
Yep.
What is that?
What do you mean, what is the police chap? The police chaplain, is that what you?
Yeah.
Which was supposed to not cost us anything, but now I guess it is costing us, so. And this one here, that they would do it even, whatever you decide, you must do, you must do what you want and we know that will not influence in any way our desire to serve the town in any capacity. I mean, this is what these folks should do. This is why they get, I mean, it's a good thing, but that's what their purpose is.
Well, but let's get back to the police chaplain. Is that a town?
It's not a town employee. It's a town volunteer sanctioned by the Board of Selectmen and the, and the Police Department to deal with families and police officers who are in crises due to, and firefighters for that matter. I mean, right, it's not just exclusive to-
We, we have used her on the fireside. We can't get the fire chaplain.
The issue is this. Is that the sole place that this, that this person, I mean, you could make an argument that she could be housed right across the hallway.
Well, then when, when she does, then we stop plowing.
Well, then I would make an argument to save, to save the town twelve-hundred dollars, let's have her be here.
In fact, one of the things, if I may, one of the things I've thought about is, you could say that of any of these. I mean, we continue to plow as long as you hold, you allow us this many meetings.
Well, that's going to be part of the agreement.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, they're going to have to somehow demonstrate to us on a year-to-year basis that they've continued to provide that dollar amount of municipal services.
This one's, this one's a slippery slope, though, I think, because it, yes, they volunteered to have her be there, which is such an awesome thing, and she's a volunteer, I mean, great person. But yet it's not something that we really necessarily have to engage in. It's a nice plus to have a place of privacy where you can, you know, you know-
A continuing engagement with a, a family that has had-
Right.
Intervention by the police and then the family can come see this person for counseling, not in the more, in the police building, in the police department.
It's more confidential there than coming.
No, and I, and I understand that, but I guess-
More confidential, not as imposing. So it's more private and also police officers that want to have counseling off-duty.
Right, no, I, I, I get it. But again, it's just one of these things where it's, we're going to be in a position, this whole thing is difficult because you're going to be in a position where you're going to have a lot of these other things popping up.
I, I feel we asked for a dollar, quid pro quo. The organization did that in writing.
I'm, I'm going to make a motion that we continue to plow it based upon the fact that they provide a specific service to municipality.
To the police department.
The police department. Equal to or greater than the value of the plowing. The cost for plowing trash.
If that public benefit goes away, then-
Yeah, that's true of any of them, right.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll call for the vote then. Goffstown Christian Fellowship, motion is to continue plowing based on the benefits as explained in the letter of the- Those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Four, one. St. Matthews Episcopal Church.
One-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars.
They're all the same, but yet the sizes of all these things are so different.
Yeah, Villa was more.
Well, I'm just talking about the last three.
The three were the same, yeah.
Wow, it's weird. Well, if we're going with, if you're, if that's, if that's how we're going to, you know, deal with this, this, this particular church has probably done more than any other organization that we had in terms of quantifying it, the food pantry, the clothing center, you name it, their coordination with the welfare office, the library, all they do. I mean, if that's, if that's the case, then this one-
Well, those are two that jump out at me, the welfare office and the library. I mean, those are municipal. I, I don't know what collaboration means, but-
Well, I mean-
We can quantify the number, though.
Right, yeah. But, you know, their argument that they made was that we have a welfare budget and because they take care of people who are needy, whether it be with clothes or food, that the welfare office doesn't have to cut a check to somebody, so therefore it keeps our welfare budget at thirty-five thousand, whereas hell, if they weren't here, it might have been three-hundred thousand. I'm not saying I completely legally buy that argument, but that's what the argument they're making.
Those two arguments, the collaboration to, with the welfare and collaboration with the library for different activities that the library does sponsor well exceeds the documented cost of the plowing.
I make a motion to continue plowing based upon the value of those services.
I'll second it.
Further comment?
I think that's, I'm just going to make mine before we take the vote, that this one, I think, does more than a lot of the others, but I, I think that these are all incidental, that, that the plowing is not incidental. And the other, the argument, I think, was the strongest argument for plowing St. Matt's Church was the fact that we had no parking, the library had no parking, and library employees would park there so that they would free up the, the eight spots that they had in front. I think that made completely, complete sense. But churches are sup, they're in the business of charitable giving. That's why they get a federal tax exemption. This one and all the others. And it's great that there is an outreach between the library and, and this particular church, but it's, it's not something that is totally necessary. It's great for the community and it comes back, that investment comes back in hundredfold, but again, my heart is with them, but my mind isn't, so.
My advice on that, when, Sue, you're going to provide directions to the town attorney to draft, draft documents for us to approve.
Home agreements, yeah.
And my recommendation is we focus only on those two that we spoke of this evening. Collaboration with welfare and collaboration with the library, those are the strongest arguments and not document the other-
Right.
Potential benefits. Those are, those are benefits Scott just spoke of.
I think I, I think I mentioned those specifically in my motion.
You did.
Yep.
Got it.
I've lost track. Have we voted it?
No.
No.
Excuse me for a mental slip there. Okay, call for the vote on St. Matthews Church. Those in favor indicate, say aye.
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 No, I'm sorry, I'm a nay on that.
Those nay?
Nay.
Okay, it's four, one. It's getting late. Do we want to take up plowing and services evening?
I mean, excuse me.
Do you want to take up trash and-
It's fresh in our mind.
Well, I don't know if we can have a, a-
Recycling, you can't.
I think we need to get some legal case law on trash and recycling because I don't think this is applicable.
Right, I don't think, I don't think we have the information in us to make the, make the proper decision.
Picking up on Selectman Gross's point of all of this is incidental to roads. Not much on the case law dealing with trash collections. Okay. What research is going to be done then, Sue?
Whatever case law applies to doing trash and recycling, pick up on-
Private.
Private property.
And that's a question you can ask local government, sir.
Try.
Try.
Well, I don't think we should do that. I think we should ask our attorney.
Yeah, because-
Because we didn't, he'll be the one who's, I mean, if that's the rationale we're going to use, I mean, we have pretty well-thought-out legal opinion, which we didn't really take, you know, we, we took, our, our town attorney is the one that we have to go with. I think it has to be Drescher.
And, fine, if we do that with Drescher, Sue, you need to bulletize some information from Carl as to how we got engaged with the recycling of certain private residents and document how we went down that road. So that Drescher has those pieces of information. Yes. Yes? New, any other old business the board would like to discuss?
I did. I was approached by a resident of Timberwood, and the gentleman asked me as to whether or not there would be a crosswalk that would go from Timberwood to the, you know, the newly-built sidewalk. And the, the striping plan does not have one, however, there is a crosswalk, that's what, about 15 yards away, 20 yards away?
Yes, I have the, the lane marking specifications that this board's earlier reviewed, and it shows a crosswalk at Lynchville Park Road, and by the bar scale, I've estimated 140 feet from the driveway...
That's a lot more than that.
...to the crosswalk. And were they, were they asking for a crosswalk right at their driveway?
There was, yeah, they were, they were questioning, would there be a crosswalk right there? And I said, no, there is one at Lynchville, Lynchville, right?
Yep.
Then, I was asked, well, you know, what about, you may be doing something on the shoulder, because there's a lot, there's kids who, who live in, in Timberwood, so that it would be safe for them to get to the, to the sidewalk on the other side, and it looks like the shoulder, it's a fairly big shoulder, I mean, if we're, one of the reasons why we would put the sidewalk there was to assist with pedestrian safety.
Mark, are you familiar with that location?
I am, I am.
So, I don't know if there's a quick, you know, fix in terms of just, you know, maybe paving that 100-foot of shoulder area or something.
Would the board like the Director of Public Works to give us an estimate of what 140 feet of improvement would entail? Whether it's just nip back, or a hardened shoulder, or some sort of asphalt, let him come up with a solution?
Yeah, that would be my, I think, I think it makes common sense, there's a lot of folks who live in there, I mean, it's a fairly substantial development.
Why couldn't you just move this crosswalk down?
There's no tip-down, for one.
Oh, there isn't?
No.
The tip-downs have been...
Am I concerned with having a crosswalk, if we were to move it up to the driveway or entryway, heading, say, southbound Master Road, you come around the curve, it's kind of a blind curve there, I'd be...
I think, I think this would be a neat, I think widening or creating a little walking area to get to that crosswalk would be the least expensive, most efficiently doing it.
Coordinate that project with Carl, let him give the board some ideas and costs.
I have another old business, sorry.
Yeah, I have one as well.
Carl and I went to the, visit the alderman, before aldermen, who were on a committee, kind of similar to our Highway Safety Committee, this was about Ponview Estates and the trucking, the, the trucking ban. You know, we presented all the valid arguments that, that, that we had, and unfortunately, we were not successful.
He said, thanks for stopping in.
Pretty much.
So, my question to you then is, when Manchester Highway comes to our facility in the morning, which way do they go, what time do they go, and if and so, they are using that back road, are they breaking that ordinance?
If they are coming before 7:00 a.m. or after 8:30 p.m., they would be violating the ordinance.
They, they stamp them also, we can find out.
What class of traffic were you just speaking?
The, the recycling trucks that, that Manchester...
Well, they, they would not be before 7:30, because that's when our facility opens, and they, they haven't even started collecting at that point.
In Manchester? Or they probably...
Manchester collects early.
They've probably been out for...
Five o'clock.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we...
They, they have the records of the transfer station when everyone comes in, so they could check.
When they weigh them in.
And that was right, I mean, we, we talked, I talked about the two-way flow of traffic, because it's not just traffic coming from Goffstown, Ware, or, you know, Dunbarton or New Boston, it's, it's, it's business owners from Manchester that have to make, say, deliveries to Goffstown, Ware, you know, it's, so now, they have to make a six-mile detour. So, we raised those issues, and Carl even said, well, what about all those other residents that now you're disturbing, because now they're going the long way around through Pinardville, you know? And, um...
The killer?
Yeah, well, I will say this, the, help me with the Patrick, what's his name?
Blackpool?
No, Murphy, maybe? He's the alderman. He did come to us afterwards and said that he was not part of the, that four-person panel, he was just there, that was his, his ward, but he said that he recognizes the fact that the state's talking about an off-ramp, and that he, he doesn't think that it'll be long before, you know, they're going to revisit that, because if that improvement happens, it's just a matter of time where they'll probably have to lift the restriction or do something.
If I hear where that off-ramp is going, it's not going to do us any good whatsoever at all. They're going to go to Hacket Hill Road with it.
Yeah, right.
You know, I mean, if it goes to Hacket Hill Road, fine, what it be, but...
You know, so the question is, that we tried to raise, and, and, so for the viewing audience, just so you know, we have a, we have a, there's a parcel of land that is undeveloped that is on the back road, about 2,000 feet from the Manchester line called Ponview, and there have been so far two applications that have been heard by the planning board, I think approved, but then later withdrawn, subsequently withdrawn, and one of the issues is, is that, I'm not sure if I'm allowed to talk about assessments, or am I not allowed to talk about that? About the value?
Assessments, or...
We've, we've had a challenge on the assessment, because the person, the owner thinks that the property is worth less, because Manchester, one of their arguments was Manchester had a, had a restriction, so that would, it would hurt their ability...
The sale ability.
Right, it would, it would impact their ability to, to develop it as a, maybe a regional distribution center or something.
Reduces the valuation.
So...
Justin Felice, yeah?
The, the big, the issue that we tried to impress upon them was that they allow the only, they used to have a restriction from the circle all the way to the Goffstown line, 10 or 12 years ago.
Brought it up.
They brought it all the way up to Straw Road, to the Goffstown line, and it's 2,000 feet. Everything else is, is fine. So, i- in many cases, it's, it's restrictive, you know, for Goffstown.
Trucks can go from Amersky Circle to Straw Road.
To Straw Road, no problems, anytime.
They turn right on Straw.
So, for those 100 homes...
Straw has a restriction on it, the sign's still up.
Yeah, it was everything.
But you know, you know, I, I, I thought about this, and I don't know, Mark might, might remember this, might be aware of this, but they put no-through trucking on the cut-through from Brown Ave, where you go up around...
Yeah, yep.
Up, back up.
Yes, they do.
And then they put the, they put the, the bumps, the speed bumps on there, and they had no-through trucking for quite a while, and my understanding, the reason why that was taken out, because it was a challenge, court challenge, and for some reason or other, they couldn't restrict it, that, and I'm wondering if that might apply...
That's what I think is with us, right?
That that might apply to this.
I was, could very well be, I was just going to ask the town administrator if she could check with the transfer station. Let's get a list, see when those trucks are coming in, time slips, time slips, let's, let's see if they are in fact, if they are guilty of breaking that rule, and if they are guilty of breaking that rule, let's use that as a...
Would municipal vehicles be exempt?
No. No, 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 because we've been ticketed. We've been ticketed once. Yep.
I mean, I...
So, I think that, you know, I think the bigger question is that it just seems almost inherently unfair, I mean, it's not as, this is an arterial road, I mean, this is not just some...
No, this is...
This is a major road for not just our community, but for Dunbarton and Ware and all the points west.
It's a road from a, an interstate interchange leading into this town.
I mean, I...
And that, their action is... It's not just this town, it goes through.
To, to the outlying town.
I would love to...
And that, that ordinance is restricting flow.
Flow. I would love to, um...
It doesn't connect to two-state roads, though, right?
What, that road?
Goes right to 293.
293.
But if it...
293 to 114.
There's a certain law, remember, if there's a road that connects on both ends to a state road, then you can restrict.
293, 293 here, and the 114 right over here.
Man, I would love to, I mean, after hearing their argument, I thought it was kind of shallow, I would love to get Drescher's thoughts on, do we have a case here if we were to challenge them legally as to, as to the legality of that particular ordinance? It just doesn't seem like it passes the smell test, that, I mean, if we did something like that, if, if we, I mean, let's, if we, if we put up in our little compact area a no-trucking, I mean, I, I guess we could, or, or do we, or, I mean...
You can regulate your roadways.
Any way you want.
Uh, we've pulled that far, I'm sure there's case law where certain things were not allowed.
Given, given the size of that piece of commercial property, it's worth engaging Drescher and finding out.
I would.
I, I'd support that.
Yeah. I would, too. And I, but I would bring up to Drescher, and I can't remember the name, the name of the road that you cut through from Brown Ave, you get off...
Yeah, when you get off, it's immediate.
You go right up, you hit all the stuff.
You got MapQuest on there?
Yeah, no, I know exactly what you're talking about.
I know, you go, you go left, you go up the hill, and you go right, you go right up to Steeve.
Yeah, come up to, when you go to the post office.
I can't remember the name of those streets.
Right up to the post office.
We, we finished that discussion. Any further old business?
Do we just ask, would, would it be appropriate to have Sue get the slips from, from Carl for the, for the trash recycle from Manchester and see if they are in fact?
Yeah.
Okay.
They're readily available.
Just one quick old business, if I could.
Yes, sir.
So, have we made any headway with getting together with the school board to talk about...
Stacey's ringing it up at the next meeting.
Yeah, I ran into her at the football game on Saturday, and I asked her, and she said she is bringing it up at the next school board meeting to, that's what she said.
Who's the school board rep here? Is it, or you?
We don't have one.
No, it's on this. The chair.
Chair, I'll, I'll talk to Sue tomorrow about it or another day.
Okay. Finally, new business.
Motion to adjourn.
Sue, were there a reason that the...
Committee reports, committee reports.
The order of notice was in our package, just FYI.
That's just FYI, we don't have to go into non-public...
And, and that deals with all the property taxes, that's all that...
Yep.
Notice.
Said we defer the committee reports.
Yeah, you got an early morning tomorrow, getting to the polls. Those of you that are opening.
I'll be there for 6:00.
Be there at 6:40.
I have to help line, I'll set the machines up.